I'll call the, I'll call the May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one Caroline County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We all can stand and I'll do the invocation. Eternal God, our Father, once again, we come before you asking for your blessings over our meeting tonight. Heavenly Father, asking for special blessings for us as we continue to work through our budget and through the processes and procedures of the county. Heavenly Father, bless the county, the Commonwealth of Virginia, of course, always, United States as we go through turmoil times. And continue to pull us together. These are our blessings, as in precious name, amen. Please turn for the political. Mr. Forehand, any opening comments?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Black?
Yeah, I have a few, Mr. Chairman, thank you. First of all, I had the opportunity on Friday to attend Caroline High School's graduation. Very, very nice ceremony that the schools put on. Actually, it wasn't as hot as I thought it was gonna be, so that was really nice. Very good speeches. I thought for having to do it outside, when they usually do it at Mary Washington, they did an excellent job with everything, with the social distancing and everything that they did. So congratulations to the class of twenty twenty one. The other thing is, I was, there was a VACO meeting on Friday that I attended, and there was some actually really good, sometimes it's dry, but it was a really good informative meeting, and I don't know if, at some point would be interested, one of the topics was cyber attacks on towns. And there was a lot of information that I thought was new, that I did not know at all. And I don't know if, if the board would at some time be interested in listening to, there was a gentleman from Bay Corp who gave the presentation, it was very enlightening. As to, as to if your county encounters one of these things, how to go about approaching it. So, very, very interesting. We did talk about, I know Mr. Thomas has been big on the support of transportation funding from the state. We did discuss that a little bit. I think that'll be discussed more a little bit later on. I know some counties are not in favor of, I, I think some counties are not in favor of that. So that will be interesting as well. But overall, it was a very good meeting, and there were several jurisdictions, especially your larger ones, Fairfax County, Alamo County, that did not do the five percent. For the schools, they did not do the match to five percent. And their reasoning was, it was just way too expensive for them to be able to do the match. So it seemed like the counties that were, did not do the five percent with the very large ones. And they had discussed possibly getting together across the state, supervisor across the state, making public when one of these mandates comes down for five percent raise, what it actually means to localities, the cost of localities. But it's not, there's this belief that the state's giving the teachers a five percent raise, and it's not, it's not how it is. We have this huge match in some, in some localities, even like Louvana spoke up, and theirs was a thirty-five percent state, sixty-five percent county paid. So a lot of the counties were definitely being about getting that out to the public, that, and to the teachers, that when the state mandates something like this, a lot of times the cost is, is definitely on the county. So, very interesting meeting. So that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment for all those that, that like to go to yard sales and garage sales. The town of Bowling Green is having clean sweep on the fifth of June. I'm sure you, if you're on Facebook or you're, you're looking at posted signs, there's a lot of people excited about it. It brings a couple thousand people to Bowling Green, so the fifth, fifth of June, it's a Saturday morning, be aware that moving around could be very difficult, but everybody's excited about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Mrs. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. I always look forward to that day. Long as I can get out before my husband stops speaking. I just want to say, I reminded all the gentlemen about Mother's Day. Don't forget Father's Day, I said, June ladies, for all, and children, to remember those special gentlemen in your life, make them feel appreciated. And that, and also in, we'll remind you again at our meeting on the eighth, but remember the county fair is in June. It is back for the basics. And we pray for wonderful weather and a lot of fun there. So put that on your calendar, it's June twenty third through twenty sixth.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Thomas?
Thanks, sir. First of all, I'm gonna thank Mr. Black for following up with VACO, and specifically, we wanna add transportation as part of the composite index. So if we ever get a chance to see what that real formula is, that would be nice, but I'd like to add transportation to that to make it a little fair for rural county. Cause we're the ones that really suffer. We've got the same budget as Fredericksburg, but two or three times the amount of transportation costs that we could be using for teacher raises, if that was the case. I also have a congratulations for the entire board and the county. The MCDN expansion project was announced. I don't know if you all saw the press release, but that was a project that was approved in twenty nineteen. And the entire MCDN project has been here since two thousand and six, and they've been a great corporate neighbor. They've got a high school apprentice program. So we do thank them, and there's also another part of the project, which was their industrial park that they're trying to do, that's still to come. So there's still more from them. We appreciate that. And I've got one, I'm not sure if it's Mr. Fincham, but Sunshine Road, we have no through trucks there. And I spoke to VDOT today, there was an accident with a truck caught on that small bridge. For whatever reason, the truck driver thought his long truck could fit on that sharp curve, and he got stuck on the guardrail. So I have VDOT investigating that we're supposed to have no through truck signs on both sides of Sunshine Road. That's kind of a loop on three oh one. So I spoke to Kyle, I think there's supposed to be a VDOT person here this afternoon. Oh, okay. So, you know, if we could follow up on that, I think Kyle said he was gonna be at our next meeting. So we're investigating that. If you could follow up, I'd appreciate it. That's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I just have a few comments myself. My first comment, I went to the R triple A meeting, Rapid Haddock area on aging, to our monthly meeting. And we had some issue with theft of catalytic converters from the vans for, that we transport port people through the county, Caroline, Spotsy, I think five localities, and that cost us about a thousand dollars. So we're, we had to put up a fence and put in a security system to try to nullify the thefts from those vehicles. So that was about a thousand dollars per catalytic converter, which certainly hurt our budget, and we've been talking. And we had those concerns, and hopefully we won't create a shortfall for us, because we did get some federal money from the, from the COVID act, COVID fund, so hopefully that will offset some of the losses that we have. At our last meeting during public comment, the chair and vice chair of school board came to our meeting and said that I canceled the July joint meeting. And that they hope that it wasn't because we're not interested in what schools are doing. Had absolutely nothing to do with anything that schools were doing, or us not being interested. We have not had a meeting in July in the last four or five years, and staff has usually used that month to take vacations. So it had everything to do with, with staff in terms of taking, having an opportunity to take a vacation. And I thought for sure that giving them notice in May would give them an opportunity if they wanted to meet, and it had nothing to do with collaboration or communication. So it's unfortunate they feel that way, but it is what it is. We are waiting for a new date, and I think you read my correspondence. And for any citizen or any organization that wishes to present, or has a presentation before the board, they simply call Mr. Cully. And we try to get them on the agenda. We don't crowd the agenda, but if they wanna report on end of year school activity, summer learning programs, or, I don't have an issue with that. I'm sure this board wouldn't have an issue with that. So it's unfortunate that they feel that way, but like I said, it is what it is. Finally, I did attend the graduation. It was an awesome ceremony. I had not, believe it or not, been to a high school graduation since twenty twenty one, when my son, twenty oh one, when my son graduated. But it was good to see that the class of twenty one, they're resilient, and I think they learned valuable lessons as a result of the COVID activity. I think they really found out how resilient they are. So certainly, our hats off to the students, their parents, certainly the teachers, and those, the school board who made it possible for those students to get through a quite difficult year. But I can tell you, it was good to see that Caroline pride still exists within our student body. That's my only comment. Thank you. Before I move any further, just wanted to mention that all board members are here in present. Mr. Forehand from Madison, Mr. Black from Western Caroline, Mr. Sealy from Bowling Green, Miss Nancy Long from Port Royal, Mr. Floyd Thomas from Mattapanai, and I'm Reginald Underwood from Reedy Church. Next on the agenda, amendments to the agenda. I have one, but I'll wait till you gentlemen. Mr. Forehand, you have any amendments?
Mr. Chairman, do we need to remove agenda item number six?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that.
Okay.
Yep, I got it. Any one have, any, right, there is an amendment to the agenda that's noted, item number six. It's the Carol Carter owner, rural family development, special exception, O two dash twenty twenty will be removed from tonight's agenda. Without any other amendments?
Chairman, can you be a little more specific about that, or, or if I may? That was the potential head start project to be located just down the road from the community center.
That's correct.
And we have a letter in our packet saying they voted to not do it, right?
Right.
They, they requested it to be withdrawn, so the applicant requested it to be withdrawn from the agenda, so we'll be clear with that for the minute.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say. Okay, thank you.
So we'll need a motion to accept the agenda, amended agenda. So move, Mr. Chairman? I have a motion by Mr. Sealy. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the amend, the agenda is adopted as amended. We do have one appointment to the Rapid Haddock area community service board. I believe that's yours, Mrs. Long, is that correct? It's ours? All right.
It's the entire, this particular, if I may, Mr. Chairman, this particular appointment is to the Raxby board, and it's made by the entire board, and they, they like to have a member that actually has life experience in this. And, and I would certainly recommend the reappointment of Linda Carter, known her many, many years, know what her situation is. And she's probably an excellent Raxby board member, which is why the executive director is asking her to come back.
So there's a motion by Mr. Sealy to appoint Ms. Carter to the Rapid Haddock area community services board, second by Mr. Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We need to make communication with her, the letter in the.
Yeah.
Mr. Cully? Good staff, communicate with Ms. Linda Carter that she's been reappointed. Thank you, sir. Next, we have the consent agenda, items A through E. Any communication or conversation regarding consent agenda, items A through E?
Chairman, I do, I'd like a little more information on D.
E, D, D as in dollar. Any other items you wish to pull from the consent agenda? All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D?
Second.
Move, there's a motion and proper second to receive the consent agenda and accept it, with the exception of item D. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Thomas, you wish to speak on item D, the adoption of?
Item D is, yes, that's the adoption of a resolution requesting a waiver from the Department of Elections.
Right.
Because the county currently has split districts.
I have, I have one too.
I, I have one of those split districts, and it's, yeah, I think it's Bowling Green.
I have mine completely, in, in a way.
Well, well, we have, we've received a letter, and, and I understand the letter and request from the registrar, because we don't have the census data, we can't adjust those, but what happens if we don't do this waiver? See, I, I don't mind doing something, I just wanna know what all the options are, cause if we don't do the waiver, does that mean all those people go to the district they're supposed to be in? Which is probably what we want.
And part of this is the General Assembly's fault for not consolidating.
Mr. Cully, you have any information?
It's been, it's been a twenty year problem.
Right.
I mean, I don't know how you fix it. We, we've basically been told that we, we'll be granted the waiver, this is a formality, because there's just no way to fix it without census data.
Yeah, but, but see, suppose we don't ask for the waiver, what happened? That's what I'm saying. We, I don't mind doing something, I just wanna know what the options are.
I don't know that there, I don't know if anybody's said how you would remedy the problem with the split precincts.
See, and I, I, I do have a personal concern, because I've been at the polls with the split precincts, and people have come to me and complained that they got the wrong ballot.
Correct.
So, you know, that's something we should fix with the census, but I just wanna know, does anybody know?
No, I, I, maybe the registrar. She hasn't conveyed to staff that, other than, we need to get this done, and I told her we would get it on the agenda, and so I don't, I haven't seen anything in writing from her that said, well, if you don't do it, this is what we're gonna do.
I mean, I don't think so.
I don't think.
It says, it says this has to be done prior to November. I don't think her thinks that. I mean, we'll do it, I just wanna know what the options are. Can we just do it, can we wait two weeks? I don't think it's gonna make a difference.
I think we could table it, and then.
I, I don't know the answer to that, but yeah, I mean.
I mean, one of the dilemmas that I've heard for years is, they used, the General Assembly used to go back after redistricting, and then they would consolidate. They, they would move the, cause there was like, there was like forty people in Milford that are actually in the ninety ninth House of Delegate district. And they usually swapped those with somebody in the fifty fifth to the fifty fourth, and they swapped those all the way down. And that just hasn't taken place in a long time. So we end up.
And those are my constituents, the ones you're referring to.
Oh, no, I, I know exactly where they are. They're all in Milford.
Right.
And, and they're all in the ninety ninth congressional, or the house district, and there's no resolution. It's not something we can fix, or even the registrar can fix. The General Assembly needs to fix it.
General Assembly sets those lines until they do it.
The other problem is the referendum for redistricting commission passed, and from what I understand, they're not even gonna have their first run until next year sometime. So.
And that's, like I said, that's all handled by us today. We haven't gotten local data yet, so we can't.
But no, and we can't do anything about, I'd say we pass it and ask them to come to us and at least explain, because I know there's, there's ballot work.
I mean, I mean, we're gonna do it. I, I just wanna know what the option is if we don't do it. And we've, I mean, put on the consent in two weeks, it's not gonna make a difference, cause we're not gonna change the June, you know, election. This is for November.
That's November.
So, so we got plenty of time for November, just, just ask them what are the options, and what happens if we don't do it?
Well, wait a minute, let me ask you this. Are there any primaries that this is gonna affect in June?
No, we're already stuck.
Already doing primaries.
No, no, I understand that.
People are gonna keep voting in the primary as is. This is gonna, this, this passing is gonna keep it as is. I think we should all make a decision based on what happens if we don't do it.
Well, the, the split precincts are affecting the federal office holders, correct?
Now, this is all House of Delegate.
Oh, House of Delegate, oh yeah, that's right, House of Delegate, I'm sorry.
This is all House of Delegate, and those elections are this year.
That's all this fall, yeah, that's right.
Which is the real problem, that the census date isn't gonna be done.
Until next year, I said.
Right, and we had a couple, ten or fifteen years ago, we had to have House Delegate elections every year for three years, because they didn't get the House seats.
Straight.
I mean, that's something we're not gonna fix. I, I just wanna know what happens if we don't do that. That's all I'm.
So what we need to do is then, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take a vote, take it off, and we'll come back to it, take it off.
Right, yeah, we'll put it on consent next time, and we'll see if we can find any more information out from registrar's office with our connections to department elections. That's all we can do.
I don't wanna pass it without having questions answered. I think that's backwards.
Okay.
So.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
You wanna, do we need a motion to remove that, or just?
Just do as, uh, non-action.
All right.
We're gonna table it.
It came off, we just, it just comes back.
Yeah, we're gonna table it.
Then we'll table I, uh, agenda item D under the consent agenda, um, until we get more information. Good unfinished business. Hold on, can we, can we do, is the gentleman from Legacy Park here? I thought he. Yeah, we can do all the first readings. Mike, Mr. Finch, do you know if the gentleman from Legacy Park is coming? I thought, I thought I saw him.
I, I can't tell you whether he is or not. He was advised to the meeting tonight.
Okay. All right. We can do nine, ten, eleven. All right, then we'll move on to, okay. Is that the board's pleasure? We want to, then we'll move on to new business, agenda item number nine, Mr. Fincham. The first read of proposed amendments of subdivision ordinance and zone ordinance, text amendment zero one dash twenty twenty one, and text amendment zero two dash twenty twenty one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Your initial first reading tonight are the two text amendments that the chair referenced. TXT oh one dash twenty twenty one would modify the definition of subdivision in the county's subdivision ordinance to, to exclude property either created or condemned by the board of supervisors from the definition of a subdivision. This, this, Mr. Cully and I had discussed this matter related to the, the purchase or acquisition of the Sparta Fire Department. Certainly, there are other properties that would be potentially subject to this, such as, uh, uh, land necessary for utilities and, and, and other county facilities. And the idea was so that we did not adversely affect a property owner if we acquired a piece of property that would preclude them if they qualified from, from losing the administrative cut that's allowed under our ordinance. The second amendment would exempt public facilities or utilities from the lot size and other dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance. The perfect example here would be a, a lot for a, a well, or a, a pump station in our utility system. If one of these was located in a rural area by ordinance, it would be required a, a minimum lot size of ten acres, which is a little excessive for a, a pump house for, for the public sewer system. Same with Sparta Fire. We're looking at six to eight acres. The minimum ordinance requirement in that area is ten acres. So we give the county some flexibility when it comes to, to acquiring a property for, for governmental uses. That's it in a nutshell. The planning commission is holding its public hearing on these items, and the board actually did authorize public hearing for the June eighth board meeting.
Mr. Fincham?
Yes.
So if, if, if we didn't adopt this, we would have to get a ten acre parcel for like the Sparta Fire Station?
No, we would not. We would, we, we could go with a smaller lot.
We could, but in theory, if we stayed with the ordinance.
We might have to get a special exception.
Right, but if we stayed with the ordinance, the Sparta Fire Station should technically be on ten acres?
That is correct.
Thank you.
But now you said something, uh, if I may, you said something about affecting the subdivision. So the, the land that's originally there could be used for subdivision, for example. They could have ten houses there based on the land they have in the zone. If a county takes a piece, do they still have the ability to put those ten houses there, based on what their original?
It's not affecting density, okay? They, they still have to meet the density requirements of the ordinance. We're still acquiring a lot, or a parcel, okay, that is a lot. One, we're potentially reducing the size of that lot. But if based on their acreage, and the fact that it had not previously been subdivided, okay?
Right.
If they came in for a subdivision today, they qualify, the first lot qualifies as an administrative cut or a minor subdivision, which means we can approve it in our offices.
Right.
Subsequent lots are major subdivisions.
Right.
That require planning commission approval. That's when you get into your development standards for a state road requirement, internal state road, et cetera, et cetera. We're trying to prevent situations where we acquire a lot that otherwise meets the definition of an administrative subdivision, okay? And reserve that administrative cut for the landowner if he qualifies for, for such cut on his eight, based on his acreage. So we're trying to save him that, that, I'll use the term free cut, but from bumping him up to a major subdivision.
Well, that's what I'm trying to make sure I understand, but it sounds, it sounds like you're saying, and, and I wanna try to repeat it to make sure I understand. But I've got a hundred acres. I could theoretically put a house on every ten acres.
Yes, sir.
My density now is ten.
One per ten.
One per ten. The county comes along and says they want seven acres of my hundred acre lot. Do I still have ten houses, or do I now have nine houses, because you took a lot away from me?
No, you have nine houses, and yes, we have acquired in effect one of those ten lots.
You've taken one of the lots, okay, okay.
One, it doesn't have to be ten acres, so we could, we could acquire a smaller parcel.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, but then based, if you require, if you acquire five, then I've got ninety five, I still only get nine. I think you should protect the guy who was there to start with. And if you protect the guy, the guy who was there to start with, he should still have ten dwelling units that he could put on his property.
Yeah, that, that's going further than what we proposed.
Yeah, but you're, I mean, you're taking somebody's land, and then you're saying, we took your land and we're taking one house. Yeah, but you're, I mean, you're taking somebody's land and then you're saying, we took your land and we're taking one house away from.
Well, we're not talking about a condemnation. We're just talking in general, if the county were to negotiate to buy a piece of property. And it was this hundred acre piece you've used. And it's not been subdivided before.
Right.
We come in and we negotiate to buy whatever we need, maybe two acres, four acres, ten acres. What happens to that landowner then? He comes in and his child or somebody, he wants just to do not that whole farm. Just one more ten acre or twenty acre lot, he's in a major subdivision. The cost to go up, the development cost, the standards gotta be approved by the planning. So what we were trying to do with this thought. Was to, if the county condemns or buys a piece of land, negotiates for a piece of land.
Right.
It doesn't put the person into a major subdivision with their next cut, because that's gonna, one, drive our cost up. So we go to buy that piece of land, they're gonna go, well, jeez, if I do anything else, it's gonna cost me all this. I want you to pay for that in that two or four acres you're getting. So we, so we really weren't looking at, alright, at the end of the day, you're left whole, because we're planning on paying for the lot that we're taking.
That, that, that's fine.
What we were trying to do.
If the same example with this hundred acre lot, I can do ten houses. If I go to the planning commission and say, I wanna do ten houses, it's a major subdivision.
Correct.
Okay, that's the point I need to bring out to me. So it's gonna be a major subdivision either way. But you're again affecting the density.
We would, but we would be buying that density just like any other, anybody else. What we would be affecting. More would be the person that just wanted to do one more lot and not a major subdivision.
See, what I was thinking of, it would be, it would be fair to the landowner if we kept the density. But the landowner selling basically the density for the county for a purpose.
Under that thought process, you're actually giving him more density. You're giving him another lot.
It, it, it. What, uh, what I would like to.
What, right. And that's, that's not what we're doing. We're, we're keeping him whole, okay? He still gets his ten lots at the end of the day.
But you're buying one of those lots. Yeah.
He might be selling those ten lots.
Yeah.
There, there's no difference there.
See, my thought was to give the landowner the same density, even though the county is buying less than one full lot. You can't, you can do what you, you make the rule. You do what, do what makes people whole. But that's, I mean, you, that's, that's what makes it different. That's fine.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm fine.
Do you mind, no, do you mind table in this or doing a second reading in a month?
He's gotta schedule a public hearing.
I understand that.
I don't have a problem either way.
I, I'd just like to make a motion, we, we do a second reading in, at the, not at the next meeting, but the meeting after that.
I don't have a problem with that. My only concern with the whole thing was trying to make the original landowner whole.
Whole, right. Right, I understand.
Table it to August.
Right. I know. That's all.
Well, now, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Alright, uh, there's a motion on the, on the floor, gentlemen, that we table this until.
Second reading.
Second reading. Until June.
Till August.
Till, till August, I'm sorry. Till August. Does anyone on the board have, uh, is there a second or a comma? I'll take either.
I'll second it.
Alright, there's a motion and second that we table this until our August meeting.
Discussion.
Alright, do they, any discussion on the motion?
Would it be appropriate to actually authorize for public hearing in the second meeting in August? No, we only have one meeting now.
Right.
So we can't, yeah, we can't, we can't make, we can't act on this until September, it's early.
Correct.
Unless we call a special meeting and second meeting in August.
Okay.
Alright, there, there is a motion and proper second that we move this to the August meeting. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Yay.
I will move this to the August meeting, Mr. Finch.
Mr. Chairman, the next.
Yes, sir.
First reading on the agenda, uh, is T X T zero seven dash twenty twenty-one, which would be proposed to amend Article fifteen, section fifteen. Of the Highway Corridor Overlay District Regulations. Uh, the proposed amendment would add, uh, two sections of roads, uh, in Caroline County to the Highway Corridor Overlay District. And would subject tho, those, um, development along those roads to, uh, the stand, the H Cod standards. Uh, uh, the first road is, uh, Route six oh six from the Spotsylvania County line, uh, to Edge Hill Academy Road. Um, the second road would be, um, Route six thirty-nine, Lady Smith Road. Um, to seven thirty-eight Partlow Road and then out seven thirty-eight to the Spotsylvania County line. Uh, both of those areas are, um, we have candidate development projects in those areas. Or those areas are subject to growth and part of our growth areas or expansion areas. Um, and in discussion with, uh, uh, board members from those districts, we felt it was appropriate to. Uh, consider expanding the H Cod to include, uh, those sections of road.
Chair, I would do that way.
I just have one quick question for Mr. Fincham, the, the change, the change to highway corridor overlay district. Will affect the solar amendments that we're doing later?
No, I don't believe so. I, I think the solar amendments. Well, if a property came in and, and made application, then that was along one of these roads. It would be subject to the H Cod provisions in the solar regulations. That's correct.
Which was an extra step in solar regulation, that's what I'm gonna make sure of, but that's.
Any more discussion on, uh, text amendment zero seven twenty twenty-one? How does the board wish to proceed on this text amendment?
Um, I'll go ahead and say that we move to, uh, I guess we have to have a public hearing on this, correct?
Yes, sir, and I think you already authorized us to have the public hearing in, at the June eighth meeting.
Okay.
Yes, we requested that at the last meeting when we put it on this agenda.
We don't need the second agenda officially.
No, ma'am. Unless you want to remove it, no actions necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fincham. Um, we should do, do item number eleven. We can do eleven.
Yep.
Alright, we'll move forward and do item number eleven, approval of a grant, uh, management agreement. With broadband telecom for, uh, implementation of a broadband Vaddy Grant project. Mr. Colley, don't move. Don't move.
Second.
That would be perfect, yes.
These are the guys who are gonna manage the grant.
Correct.
I was gonna say, Mr. Sadler, I'm sure doesn't wanna be, make a pun saddled with any more of this. Um.
And that's, right, I see that.
And, and I think with this, with this contract, it alleviates and moves everything forward much, much, much more quickly.
And it's a multi-county contract. This is just our share, so all the counties on the Vaddy Grant that we're all using the same contract, so.
So this is our port, thirty-six thousand, our portion for the eighteen month. Comes out of the, uh, relief.
Correct. That was part of the program.
Just so we're all clear, just see the motion, but I, I think I did. Oh, you made a motion.
And I think I seconded.
Alright, well, there's a proper motion and a second by, uh, proper motion by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Sealy. Or that we approved the grant, uh, management agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
One, one question on number twelve, can they, will they still have time to help us with the next Vaddy Grant? Even though they're managing.
Yes.
Cause, I mean, they helped win the first one, so if they could help win the first one, I'd like to see them help with the second one.
Yeah, if they can.
Yeah, they're, they're saying they can.
Alright.
I, I, I'll make a motion that we, um.
This is the notice, not the contract for them yet. That, that one we have a little.
Authorization to submit the Vaddy Grant Notice for Application Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two.
Correct, which I think is due in July. That we're gonna apply.
The application's not due until September.
Correct, but we have to give this notice letter that we are intending to apply that y'all have to do.
And this is the project that we've all talked about and have everything sort of ready to go.
Well, we, we don't have, well, all the final numbers, but we'll start working on it when you proceed.
So, so I guess my question is. If the, if another project is, is ready, should we not hear from the broadband committee in terms of which project?
I don't think they have another project ready. That would be.
We're gonna submit something, well, yeah, we're just saying, here, this, we're saying we're gonna.
Cause they submitted this to us for approval back.
That's the one, they, that's the one the broadband committee has recommended. It's the original project we discussed sometime. Had some study work done on. Other projects, I don't think are far enough along to make the September deadline.
And there, there may be, we, we were supposed to have some meetings with, uh, other vendors, cause there may be a possibility of expanding that project and some other things.
Yeah, that'd be a bigger project, I'm saying.
We still have to discuss.
There's a lot of work to do on a lot of that yet.
But, um, this is saying, yes, we wanna submit a grant.
And we've got a project to submit.
And the pro, and the, the project.
And the project, I don't wanna commit it to, to the project. No, I just wanna say we're gonna submit the Vaddy Grant.
No, we're submitting the, the project on the western side. I don't know what detail you wanna give, but the project we've all studied, that's a, uh, a number, remember the number passed?
So the, the, this authorization would allow us to send a letter to Vaddy just saying that we intend to apply. We don't have to mention the project or the partner or anything. Just, we have to let them know that we intend to be part of this grant cycle.
Right. Gotta at some point get the contractor working on, on the wall. They gotta walk, remember, we only had a tabletop, we don't have a.
But that's what I asked you about, the meeting with that vendor and another vendor, so we could possibly get a different number on that project. Mr. Sadler is aware of the, the meeting that we've been trying to get, so.
Yeah, I, I, I got those, but I don't, I didn't, that's not the.
Okay.
Alright, we, we just, as long as you intend to apply, we'll work out the details and bring that back in a formal.
Right.
In August.
I'm gonna make a motion.
I thought we were identifying the project to move forward because we're running out of time. It's due in July.
September.
Letter, September is the application.
Yeah, but we, but we've gotta give the company time to do the rest of the work and they're waiting for us to make.
We want that company to talk to another company to make sure we have the best possibilities of maybe it could get a bigger project for the money we're putting in.
So the authorization would, would signal to the possible partner or partners that we are serious about moving forward. Uh, so that we can take those numbers from the desktop estimate to a hard number that we need to apply.
So you really need the project, the, the fictitious project that we've been looking at also approved to move forward?
That's the kind we find to give to that, that if y'all are serious, you can apply for a Vaddy Grant, so you can move forward.
Because it's May, I mean, and we only have one more meeting.
Have we been updated on what these projects are? Only, you're only talking about one specific project, the, the, the one. Yes, okay.
But we, I, I think we need to move forward with that project to get it done.
Excuse me, isn't the, um, broadband committee looking at?
Looking at some other things, but I don't think the broadband committee thinks that they can get that done for a Vaddy Grant this year.
Well, that's what they said at their meeting.
That's why I'd like to hear from the broadband committee as to what they, I agree we should.
They did. They recommended the project that I'm asking you to support tonight is the one the broadband committee has recommended that we apply for Vaddy Grant for. That is their recommendation. Is that not correct?
Yes, it was probably about two meetings ago, uh, when we had the broadband committee chairman here and, and he, he brought the recommendation back from the committee.
Mr. Barlow, right?
Yes, and, and, no, no, it was the vice chair. Um, and, and so the recommendation was that we, that from the committee, that we move forward with that project. And that we also try to negotiate a better contribution from the partner. Uh, and, and both of those are, are, well, one of those is currently taking place. Uh, but at that time, the board didn't take any action for us to actually apply for the Vaddy Grant, so that's what, we just need some clarification at this point.
Can we have a?
Mr. Tom?
Can we have a, a work session or closed meeting after we, I didn't realize we have to do this, but.
When, Mr. Colley, uh, can you explain to me, when is the, when is the deadline for this? We have to give a letter in July that we intend to apply. So. And we have to get the contractor that we worked with in, in twenty twenty. Notice that we want to apply and they have to do more detailed work and have to have much tighter numbers than we currently have to be able to make the application in September. Of which we want, uh, the company we hired tonight will come back with you for a price for them to write the grant. So it's you highly recommended that we, we approve number twelve, is that what you're saying? Yes. Okay, alright. I think we're, we're gonna start running out of time. Okay. Yep, so I'm gonna go ahead then and, and make a motion that we authorize to submit Vaddy Grant Notice for Application for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two. On the project that we've been talking about. On the project that we've been talking about.
Project that we studied in twenty twenty.
Yes, the project we studied in twenty twenty.
Alright, there's, there, there's a motion by Mr. Black that we. Uh, it's number twelve, authorizing, um, well, this is just a mint.
Submit the authorization letter.
Right, I think we should submit the letter, but he's, Mr. Black's motion is included, is the project is included, correct?
Right, so that we tell the vendor that we're moving forward with their project with the Vaddy Grant.
Alright, so Mr. Black's motion is to authorize, and I'm just not speaking for Mr. Black, just make sure he agreed. The authorization to submit the Vaddy Grant Notice for Application with the project.
Yes.
That's your motion, correct? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Uh, Forehand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye.
I'll, I'll vote nay.
Nay. Oh, whoops, there's, uh, division. Mr. Forehand, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Sealy?
Aye.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas votes nay and I vote nay. The motion carries forward to. So, um, we can go ahead and give notice to submit this, uh, grant. Alright, at this time. At this time, I'd like to go into. Yeah, we will. That's right, we already voted. Um, well, we, we're gonna go into closed session. And we will come back and if, we will start with a public comment. And then we'll move on with our public hearing for tonight. So, any objection? Need a, uh, motion, Mr. Black?
I move that this board convene in closed meeting pursuant to the real, uh, real estate and contract negotiation exemptions of sections two point two, thirty-seven eleven, A three and A twenty-nine. To discuss the potential acquisition of real property related to a new fire station in the Sparta area. And the potential acquisition of real property related to the county's water system, where discussion in an open meeting could adversely affect the bargaining position of the county.
Second.
There's a motion for closed, closed session. Final second. Give an all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here we go. We're now back in session. Mr. Black, would you read the?
I move that Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open and meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second. There's a motion in proper second. If we come out of closed session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back in session. Mr. Forehand, do you so certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Black, you so certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Sealy, you so certify?
Mr. Chairman, I so certify.
Ms. Long, you so certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Thomas, you so certify?
I so certify.
And I so certify. Again, I want to apologize for being late. We just had some discussion about county business and it ran over, so again, I apologize. Well, now, come to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for citizens to come and speak to any matter that's not a public hearing. You can speak directly to the chairman. It's not directed to any board member. You have three minutes to, for your public comment. So, public comment is now open. If you want to come forward, please state your name and your voting magisterial district. Public comment is now open.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Honorable Mr. Underwood, Chairman, Forehand, Black, Sealy, Ms. Long, Mr. Tom. Before I make a comment to you, I'd like to remind you I was here last month's meeting. I do know how the tax rate and everything was voted, so my comments are related to that sort of. The county did a reassessment, and my reassessment went up. So therefore, I will be paying more taxes. Then y'all added the tax increase, supposedly it's supposed to be equalized, yet my taxes went up. So in the last couple of weeks, I received So in the last couple of weeks, I received my personal property tax bill through the mail. My personal property taxes increased. I don't understand what is going on in the, I don't understand this. I just, reassessment, tax rates, now personal property, or my vehicle went up? This is not, I'm a senior living on fixed income. When is it gonna stop? I just don't understand, even if they, I'm assuming, Mr. Bassoon is not here, I was hoping he was here because Mike could have answered my question. I don't understand, maybe he used some kind of different scale, but my one particular vehicle should not have went up $2,000 more than it was assessed at last year. It's not fun. I don't care, my car is five years old because the 22s are out, it should not have gone up $2,000 above what it was last year. And goodness knows what my husband's 22-year-old truck, what they did to that. So I just, there's gotta be a stopping point. And I really would appreciate y'all looking into it, even if they use the NADA Blue Book, how can you use a NADA Blue Book when you don't know the condition of the vehicle? Nor the mileage? So how can you do this? So I thought, I would like it looked into by someone. Maybe you guys can, can share with the office, I don't know, but I don't think this is good. And I appreciate y'all listening, I hope to see something done, and I appreciate your time.
Could you state your name and magisterial district?
Bonnie Cannon Bowling Green, and I apologize, sir, I forgot, I think y'all, I think y'all know me.
Maybe we do, but we had to have it for the camera.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
My name is Travis Rich, actually, my name is Coach Travis Richardson, I'm the director of Team Loaded Girls Basketball, and I'm also the assistant girls basketball coach at Caroline High School. I just wanted to talk to y'all a little bit about Team Loaded Girls Basketball. As we started off as Virginia Dynasty, I took girls from Caroline County and Richmond, Virginia, and put them together, and you know, we travel, and I tried to obtain college scholarships for these young ladies using basketball as a vehicle for these young ladies. We're now team loaded, and we travel pretty much up and down the east coast, and me and my wife, who is the head coach at Caroline High School, girls basketball program, so Leader Charles Richardson, we started Virginia Dynasty, and we pretty much used our own money, you know, to help these young ladies, you know, obtain these scholarships, and now that we're team loaded, we move forward, and we're still helping these young ladies, as we travel up and down the east coast to these recruiting tournaments and everything, and trying to get these young ladies in school for free. We're doing the fundraiser, we're just asking for any type of donation, if possible, any amount helps, as it will help us, you know, travel and try to offset some costs as we travel in July to Indianapolis, Indiana, to a big recruiting event, and Atlanta, Georgia, to a big recruiting event. Like I said, and over the years, we've helped over 75 young ladies, young female student athletes, obtain college scholarships, whether it be through basketball or academics. And we're just looking for some help from the county, and like I say, any amount helps.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? Anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? All right, public comment is now closed. Coach, if you would get with Mr. Cully and give him your information, should any, Coach Richardson, would you give Mr. Cully, our county administrator, your information, and should any of us want to make a donation, or? Well, I want to help in any way we could possibly put on our website, he's right, right here. Thank you. Next on the agenda tonight, we have several public hearings. First on the public hearing is text amendment 18-2020 through text amendment 21-2020. Major minor solar project, project text amendments. Mr. Mitch Finchem.
I just got my new glasses, Mr. Underwood.
I'm getting used to it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your first set of public hearings tonight is TXT 18 through TXT 21-2020. The board has had a number of meetings where we discuss the, these items. These are the proposed amendments to the Caroline County zoning ordinance that would allow, what I refer to as third-party solar providers to develop solar utility projects in the county under various sets of regulations. The, the four set, or the four amendments could be generally classified as follows. TXT 18-2020 would amend the Article 2 of the zoning ordinance to add the new definitions related to solar projects that have been developed up to this point in time. TXT 19-2020 would amend Article 4, which is the Rural Preservation Zoning District, to allow minor solar energy projects as a special exception use in the RP zoning district, which means they would be subject to review and approval by the Board of Supervisors, in which you can place conditions on those facilities. In conjunction with that amendment, TXT 20-2020 would amend Article 15, Section 8 of the zoning ordinance, which is the Development Standards Section, to specifically add development standards for those minor solar energy projects that the previous text amendment would allow in the RP zoning district. And I think we've been on, through, through those amendments before. Last amendment, TXT 21-2020, would also amend Article 15, but it would create a new Section 23, which would be the Solar Energy Overlay District. That district is the district in which the larger project, potential solar projects of greater than 20 megawatts up to 150 megawatts would also be allowed by special exception permit from the Board of Supervisors, but it would be limited to those areas in the county a certain distance from the major distribution and transmission lines, which are identified in the overlay district map, which is included and would be adopted with the overlay district regulations. The board authorized a public hearing tonight on these four sets of amendments. You also allowed staff to make any technical corrections that we had identified in the regulations that, or questions that arose from, from the last discussion by the board. I, I've, we've identified a couple of provisions, they, most of them were included in your packet, they are the, the language that was shaded light blue, so that the board could see the changes that, that staff had, had suggested to, to the regulations. I would also note, and it was brought to my attention, that in amending those regulations, I inadvertently created a, a minor issue with respect to the, find it here. The, I believe it's the standards in 23. Point nine. Under 23.9, and I'm on page 12 of, of those regulations. I suggested we added a condition number 16 related to fire and rescue services being provided emergency response training. If you go with those changes, I would simply ask that you reverse the order between 15 and 16. And I would ask that because if you go back to the standards for minor solar energy projects in TXT 20, we need to make a corresponding cleanup to those regulations as well, to make sure that we capture that training for these minor solar energy projects as well. And that would be at the bottom of TXT 20-2020, condition number seven. I would ask that you change that from paragraph 14 to paragraph 15, which then ties it back into the major standards.
Yes, all right, Mike, what page is that, the one you want to change, from 14 to 15?
That is in.
Is it 2020?
TXT 20-2020.
All right, okay.
That would.
Got you.
That would be page three.
Okay.
Under attachment three, it would be the bottom of the page.
Got you, thank you.
So, fixing that in, in the, in the major overlay district created that little discrepancy in, in this one. So I just want to make sure we clean that up, and that was brought to my attention, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
I know there've been a couple of other questions raised. I recall that Ford AP Hill representative had requested that the county look at a buffer adjacent to Ford AP Hill. You have a map included in the staff report that identifies the properties with the major overlay district that would potentially fall within that buffer area, as was suggested by, by Ford AP Hill. So, that issue is outstanding as to how the board wishes to address that, that issue.
Yeah, well, are you ready for questions, Mr. Finchem?
I'm ready for questions anytime.
Because Mr. Thomas has a question regarding the last point with about AP Hill.
Yeah, and, and you'll, excuse me for not waiting, but you know, our attention spans are. The map you've given us basically shows the restricted areas are in the town of Bowling Green and the town of Port Royal. Is our ordinance going to be effective in those areas?
No, if you actually, trying to explain, as you go north on Route 2?
Yes.
There is a small buffer area to the west of Ford AP Hill. You can see some properties in, that are shown in pink there with this brown buffer.
Right.
There's also a, a couple of parcels south of Ford AP Hill and east of Bowling Green that if the buffer is applied, it would potentially affect portions of, of those parcels. But none of those are in the town of Bowling Green.
That's real good. She's, she's Port Royal, just the town of Bowling Green.
Which word?
Yes, yes, right, all right, all right, yeah, I was just making sure of our authority.
Yeah, I think it's just about that, that you were all the wrong, because she's probably just a little piece here, that little piece there.
Right.
And there, I think they're closing up, the flyers, they're asked about things, that will be okay.
Mr. Finchem, you have anything else?
No, sir, other than, I did receive three letters of support that were provided to our office, and, and those were laid on, at your seats earlier this evening.
Okay. All right, so I want to, so I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for text amendment 18-2020 through text amendment 21-2020, minor and major solar projects, proposed text amendments. Public hearing is now open, please state your name, voting magisterial district, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Chip Dix, I'm with General Law Firm in Richmond, I do not live in the county. I'm here on behalf of the solar industry, and I represent the solar industry in the General Assembly, and there's an economic development opportunity that will come from this ordinance, and we very much appreciate the consideration. First of all, let me thank Mike Finchem for all of his work over the last year, working on this project and working on building consensus between various different parties. Second of all, we've got four good solar companies tonight that you're going to hear from. Small one, under five megawatts, one under 20 megawatts, and then two large developers. Next thing I would mention to you is that with respect to the overlay district proposed by AP Hill, I would recommend that what you do is instead of adopting overlay, that what you do is imagine on a case-by-case basis through your special exception process, whether or not there's radio frequency interference. As a representative of the solar industry, I don't believe there would be radio frequency interference. As Mr. Finchem knows, I know quite a bit about wireless cell towers, and have built those in the county as well. So I don't believe there would be radio frequency interference, but you could resolve that on a case-by-case basis and ask AP Hill and the applicant in that case to determine if there would be any RF interference. Lastly, I'd say that, that tonight, the solar industry stands in support of the ordinance, we have no amendments. We've worked with staff and the planning commission and the board over the last year, we very much commend you on, on your good work. You've provided a thoughtful solution and a balance between the rights of citizens, the rights of property owners and their private property rights, and also the rights of solar developers and the overall good, if you will, of, of building solar in the county. So with that, we've got a series of speakers, we've coordinated our speakers, the speakers won't repeat themselves. They'll provide you information with respect to each of those different items. So that, Mr. Chairman, is, is my testimony.
So, so if I understand your comment, looking at the overlay, you think that should be part of a special exception rather than text amendment 2020?
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that it, it, it should be, instead of adding something for AP Hill on radio frequency interference. Number one, the radio frequency interference has not been identified as to what it would be that would happen in a solar project. There's not much radio frequency interference that comes from a solar project. So if there were to be something, and I don't think Mr. Finchem is recommending that you adopt it, he's raising the issue with you.
Okay.
And I think a good solution would be to determine, a radio frequency study is pretty easy to do on a case-by-case basis to determine whether or not through the, through your special exception process, there is a radio frequency interference, and you can address it in that particular case.
I just wanted to understand your comment, that's all, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Seth Mon, I'm visiting today from Reston, Virginia, I'm with Sol UNESCO, where we're a solar developer. Some of you may recognize me, I approached the county originally with our racehorse solar project back in 2016. So I'll, I'll further Chip's comment and, and say thanks to Mr. Finchem for working on this for the past several years. We're really happy with, with where we're at today with it, as, as the industry, we feel like this represents your guys' interests without being overly burdensome or being inadvertently a memoratorium on solar, which we sometimes see when these aren't so well thought out. So we really commend the county for the work they've done. But my two projects in the county are both smaller projects, I have a 12-megawatt and a 3-megawatt project. So I'm here sort of representing the smaller end of the, the scale of projects you might see, and would be happy to answer any questions that, that anyone might have on projects of that size. But we are fully supportive of, of the text as is, and hope you are too, and look forward to presenting our projects to you in the near future, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for the effort that Caroline County has been putting into really working towards a, uh, solar ordinance that's supportive of both the growth of the industry, but as well as stakeholders who are involved in this process. We know that this is just one step in the process of being able to realize some of these projects and the economic and environmental benefits that they can bring to the community. As someone who, just quickly in terms of background.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but could you please give us your name?
Yes, sir. Thank you for reminding me. Uh, my name is Tyson Ut. I'm with Commonwealth Energy Partners.
Tyson?
Yes, Tyson, T Y S O N, Ut, U T T, uh, with Commonwealth Energy Partners, based in Richmond, Virginia. And, uh, just having, you've been born and growing up in Virginia, but then spending nearly a decade traveling the country and building these projects in other states, uh, I'm very pleased to be back home in Virginia and working on, you know, delivering these projects here in more nearby communities. Uh, I myself have driven through Caroline County many times, uh, up three oh one, ninety-five towards Maryland and other states to work on projects. And so I'm greatly relieved to be able to stop a bit closer to home and, and do the work here. Um, so again, I just want to applaud the, the county in doing a very thorough process and delivering an ordinance I believe will work for these projects and, and for the stakeholders. So if there are questions that we can answer as industry, we'd be happy to do that, but, uh, we know that this is one step in the process and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rob Probst, and I'm the project manager for CC Solar, a Virginia-based developer of solar energy generation that is looking to locate a project in Caroline County. I'm not a resident of Caroline County. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some comments to you on the proposed solar ordinance that is before you tonight. We appreciate that the county is looking for ways to identify, or excuse me, to bring solar energy generation here in a manner that provides a positive economic development in keeping with the rural character of Caroline. We appreciate all the hard work that Mike and his staff have put in over the last year and then some to identify best practices for solar development and incorporate them in the proposed ordinance before you. The proposal represents months of work by his staff to craft a regulation that, in my opinion, protects the rural character of Caroline and recognizes the realities of the solar marketplace. I'm excited that the county is bringing forward this ordinance to give clear direction on how solar development will work in the county. This new development will open the door to diversifying the economy, generate new revenue streams, serve as a possible attractor for data centers, and foster operation and maintenance businesses needed to maintain the solar facilities. CC Solar looks to invest in Caroline County with a project that will generate an estimated three point four million dollars in real property tax and thirteen point four million in equipment tax for the county over the life of the project. This revenue comes without any burden to develop new infrastructure or add new county services. In short, solar facilities offer many upsides to the county. Solar energy generation operates quietly and cleanly, and it does not generate any significant new traffic once operational. It generates no waste and is a benefit to the environment when compared to other energy generation activities, particularly at a time when our citizens and our economy are increasingly reliant on electricity to prosper. We ask that you approve the proposed solar ordinance as presented. As I close my comments, I would like to reference the three letters of support that you received, um, tonight for the passage of the solar ordinance. These letters are from Cameron Nancy Wood with G K C Properties, Mr. David Stork, and the Caroline County YMCA. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Would you spare your last name for me, please?
Yes, sir. It's P as in Paul, R O, P as in Peter, E as in Edward, S as in Sam.
Thank you. Agreed. Got you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ryan Gilchrist. I'm Director of Development at Orsted Onshore. I'm in Charlottesville, Virginia. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and provide comments on the proposed solar energy overlay district. Uh, Orsted, Orsted's Eastern U.S. Development Team is based in Charlottesville, Virginia, and Virginia's been a core market of ours. We've been building utility-scale projects in the state since twenty fourteen, and it's been impressive to see, particularly in Caroline County, how many hours Mr. Fincham, the planning department, and you all have put into developing this ordinance. Um, and I think, I believe you've landed on a policy that's well-crafted to preserve the rural character of Caroline County without stifling the opportunity of solar. The passage of this ordinance will provide us with much-needed guidelines for ideal locations and the manner in which we develop. Solar farms operate silently, and that coupled with the robust screening requirements that have been proposed fosters development in a way that preserves the rural character of Caroline County. And finally, I would like to commend the, the decommissioning work that you all put into this. Um, it's addressed in a manner that effectively lays out the timeline and the requirements, and also provides the county with some ironclad security through financial, uh, sureties. So in sum, Orsted Onshore urges, urges you to pass the ordinance as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. My name is Jamie Mears, J A M I E M E A R S, and I am here from Orsted as well in Charlottesville. I actually grew up in Henrico County, and so developing close to home is something that's really special to me, and I'm happy to be here tonight. I'm speaking on behalf not only of Orsted, but the renewable energy industry as a whole, when I say that we're committed to bringing wind and solar education to Caroline County classrooms in addition to partnering with the county to generate clean power. We are believe, a big believer in STEM education from bringing energy curriculum into K through twelve classrooms to ensuring that the teachers in these classrooms have received the proper training. There are two avenues through which we as developers are interested in supporting energy education in Caroline County. This is through KidWind and Repowering Schools. As part of our community outreach, developers can sponsor teachers and students through the National KidWind Challenge, who over the last fifteen years has provided instructional materials to educators across the country. Over the course of the school year, interesting, interested students can work to build model wind turbines at solar circuits, show off their skills at local, local, state, and national competitions, and in general, learn more about the industry. Additionally, Orsted can partner with local schools through the Repowering Schools Program. This was a part of the Wind for Schools campaign by the Department of Energy in two thousand six, uh, with efforts to increase energy awareness in schools. Uh, they do this by supporting teachers with educational materials, but more importantly, can help students and teachers build wind turbines and solar panels on their property if they choose to do so. And so as developers, we love being able to give back to the communities in which we build in this capacity. Whether it's elementary, middle, or high school students, the opportunity to provide these students with a chance to promote creativity and teamwork in the classroom through the avenue of energy is something that, that we want to push as renewable energy has become one of the fastest job creators in the country, and we believe that an early education can instill a passion for this industry and these students. I personally have found my place in this development industry through these programs, which I've worked closely with over the last five years after now ending up in the development industry. So we are, we're really excited for the opportunity to not only develop in your community, but hopefully bring some of these ch- chances to your students as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Ray Campbell. I live in the town of Bowling Green, which is Bowling Green, voting precinct. And you all know me probably as the retired clerk of the Circuit Court, but I also wear another hat as the managing member of Milford Excelsior LLC. And Milford Excelsior LLC owns a twenty-five acre parcel, which by way of full disclosure is set for rezoning for the, uh, urban grid solar project. So I do have a dog in the fight, although it's a small dog. I would call it a chihuahua, but I don't want to insult chihuahuas. While you all were back, uh, working backstage, I was out here working a little bit, and I know you're devoted to technology helping you, because I counted ten computer monitors that you all use to help you do your work. That's all these people are doing out here, is they're asking you to embrace new technology. Because if you do not embrace new technology, new technology is moving on without you. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have for me. If you have none, I'll go home, cut the lights on.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding these matters?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brent Hunsinger. I'm with Friends of the Rappahannock, a watershed group who seeks to protect the scenic and healthy values of the Rappahannock River. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed solar, uh, text amendments this evening. We appreciate the challenges that the county faces as they seek to balance economic development, the demand for increases in renewable energy sources, and protection of the, the county's rural character and sensitive natural resources. The proposed amendments do an excellent job in taking into account natural resources such as critical slopes, lands with conservation easements, riparian protection areas, wildlife corridors, protected conservation lands, and promotes the use of native vegetation and screening landscapes. We commend county staff for their efforts in creating these text amendments and believe they can be used as a model for other counters going, counties going forward in the future. We hope you will support them as we do. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hunsinger. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to hear, speak regarding these text amendments?
Good evening, members of the board. Roger Bowers, on behalf of CC Solar. Wanted to touch upon one other aspect of, of your all's movement to adopt a solar ordinance. Uh, recent legislative changes have created the opportunity for the county to consider citing agreement to go along with solar development, and that provides opportunities for, um, the companies that are coming into the county to, um, um, have a dialogue with the county about assisting with what are the county needs. And that is, um, separate and apart from the land use process. So, um, we have had discussions with your county attorney and, um, about these, and, uh, we hope to have the opportunity to further those discussions. Uh, with regards to the ordinance before you, I just wanted to stress that, um, the county retains, by using the special exception process, the county retains control over each individual project throughout the process. And, um, the review and oversight exists in every ways from the particular boundaries of, of your district that you have, how the amendments are made, citing considerations and setbacks and buffers of those things. Um, and even after the site, uh, 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 special exception is granted, the industry then needs to go and get all the state approvals reviewed by the state agencies and the regulatory bodies for the connection to the utilities, and then they come back and they go through a full site plan process where, um, they address all of the, the vegetation and the, uh, stormwater and erosion and sediment controls and construction traffic mitigation and all of those things, and those are built into this ordinance, all to happen at the site process. Uh, oh, all in all, staff has presented a thoughtful and thorough plan which, um, lives up to the purpose and intent of the ordinance and of your zoning ordinance as a whole. And so we, uh, recommend it to you, and we, uh, ask that you, uh, support it as we do and pass this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Saying none? Public hearing is closed. Board members, comments and questions? Mr. Sealy?
It didn't matter, I just, the boundary around AP Hill, Mr. Fincham. Currently, it's a mile in the ordinance, or is it not stated?
We did not state, um, a boundary in the ordinance. We simply showed you their request, um, with, um, the map that I guess is page?
Five.
Five, page five. Um, for, map prior to the staff report. It was just a supplemental exhibit, um, early.
It was hard to tell.
Right.
And, and I actually thought that we, in our work session, had agreed to a mile around AP Hill, and I'm going to go to what Mr. Bowers just said, that a special exception allows control, which also gives us the ability to move inside that boundary in places where we might need or want to. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think there's two ways to do it. If you, if you adopt a buffer, um, is, is one way. So you either prohibit it in its entirety, or you add a provision, uh, similar to we have elsewhere in the ordinance that allow that, allows that to be modified, um, subject to board approval. Obviously, that approval would be dependent upon, um, uh, RFI study or some other interference study if the board wanted to reduce that. Your other option is, as Mr. Bauer said, not adopt a buffer. If you get an application that's close to Fort AP Hill, they are going to be provided the, the opportunity to, to comment through, through our review process. If that issue is raised, then the board could still, uh, uh, require, uh, a, a study to, to address and mitigate any issues they have.
Because I do have issues with radio frequencies. I mean, I'm working in L-band, C-band, S-band, and the issues that we find in not even being able to operate in those frequencies in a lot of places around, and nobody knows where they're from. We're, we're in a situation now where L-band, the frequencies that we're using are not, not usable for, for testing. And I'm not saying it's a solar farm problem, but I think it's an exploration that would need to be taken to make sure that it's not. They do do testing at AP Hill. I, I mean, we end up with resident frequencies and wires coming back. We end up with all kinds of weird things with long runs of wire that become antennas. And I think from that perspective, whether we prohibit the mile or we actually, we actually allow special exception, that it's going to be hard to prove that those bands don't, aren't affected. It's going to be hard, how do you prove a negative? It doesn't affect today, it doesn't approve, it doesn't affect what you're testing today, but it does in some time, and I'm willing to have that debate at the technical level. I understand the cell tower process, I understand frequencies really, really well, and I get to work in all kinds of strange frequencies. So I do have concerns when we start edging on the border of AP Hill, and I think that whether we prohibit it or we allowed by special exception with AP Hill, but disproving any of that and saying it's not going to be a problem is going to be a difficult, a difficult problem to solve. That's my one reservation, and, and what I'm looking at at this point is, do we or don't we, and AP Hill isn't here tonight to say one way or the other. Do we have any correspondence from them?
I don't think, I don't think we do, Mr. Sealy, but I would suggest that, you know, that's the issue, and perhaps we put it in the text amendment and prohibit it.
Well, and, and, and I'm listening to the industry folks that are here, but I also know what the military folks say when we go to, when we go to test and what we get told. I mean, we've been bumped out of frequencies and we can't even find who's in them. Nobody wants to fess up or, or admit where they are or what they're operating in. Nobody wants to fess up or admit where they are or what they're operating in. That's my one reservation that I have. And I'll leave it there for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Ms. Long?
Uh, Mr. Fincham, if I am looking at this correctly, and I may not be, looking at this map, I only see two little areas. One in my district that's in the brown zone that sort of overlaps and one down in the Florida area, assuming that is. Other than that, from my little roar that I had out on this little TV net, like we were a mile away. And of course, you know, six tenths of the AP Hill border are not affected at all. We're just talking those two little shaded areas, correct?
Yes, ma'am. If you added it to the overlay district, that would be correct. It, it, it's, it looks like it's maybe five parcels that might fit in or fall within that buffer.
So I guess, and if those little, two little areas we got an application for, it would be up to the applicant to, to prove and we required to the satisfaction may be held that there would be no issue. And so I guess I don't see why we need to redo or change and make a one-mile barrier all around when we're just talking about five or six pieces of property. That we could do that under special exception, just like you told me when I busted bust about the fencing, that we weren't gonna fence in a thousand acres and make the coyotes run all the way around, you know? And you said, we'll settle that at special exception. So I think for those two little pieces that I'm looking at that are possibly close to the one-mile line, I think we could do that by special exception.
But you're talking about a one-mile border being all the way around AP Hill.
There is.
Well, it's not in the ordinances.
Those two, those two little dots right there are the only ones that are in the mile. Especially from the line where they're allowed to the border, it's pretty much a mile. That's what I'm saying.
Brown area and green area. And pink area.
Yeah, but we could, we could, I'm just, I'm just saying it's not, it's not a big problem.
Reinvent the wheel. Exactly. Mr. Fincham, I believe, Mr. Dixon wants to say something, I believe.
Thank you, Chairman. I would suggest that perhaps as a compromise, you could say in those areas that a study would be provided. And a study would be required of the applicant. And if you say a study, then we don't need to debate, I think, tonight whether somebody's got to disprove the negative or whatever. You take a look at the study, staff can make a recommendation, AP Hill will have a chance to comment. And if there's any radio frequency issues, it would come up in those, in those contacts through special exception, as Ms. Long suggested.
I'm gonna tell you that we've tried to study the frequencies that we're having interference with. And we can't find them. We have problems with different vehicles that don't operate. That's what I'm saying. How do you, how do you prove or disprove problem or not? Since we're looking at so few places, as Mrs. Long pointed out, if we left a mile buffer, and I'm not married to that yet, but it's sort of in our, in our context.
So we have one project that's represented tonight. It's a small project that would be in that buffer area. And so to prohibit it would basically make that project not viable. And at the same time, otherwise, that project would fit all the parameters of the ordinance that you're hopefully about to adopt. So I'm not aware, and maybe you are, Mr. Sealy. I'm not aware that solar projects generate radio frequency signals that would interfere with any other signals in different bands. So I think first of all, if we did an RF study on a solar project, I think we're gonna find out that it doesn't generate radio frequency signals. But if we find that it does, then the question is, in contact with Fort AP Hill, does it interfere with anything? Do they have concerns about whether it interferes? The location, as you know from bandwidth and radio frequency propagation studies, I mean, basically the frequencies move in and out, which is one of the reasons it's hard to identify based upon weather and all kinds of other.
All kinds, ducting, all kinds of things. Weather layers in the, in the air all have effects.
Right.
And that's what I'm, and so you're making my point. You're making my point is that we agree that there's a lot of copper wire laid throughout this. Copper, and they're all antennas. Different lengths of wire. I mean, we have a cell phone problem because of pine needles. Pine needles become antennas for very high frequencies. So propagation through pine trees is a problem for a lot of folks. And leaves, as we get leaves in the spring, people go, did they move the cell phone antenna? The antennas because we've lost our signal. They've lost them due to leaves.
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, I'm, I think we both are agreeing that on a case-by-case basis within this area, that the applicant would provide a radio frequency study. Now, the outcome of that study and whether or not AP Hill, AP Hill has concerns, AP Hill raised the question about whether there would be interference. They're not here tonight to speak to that. They haven't provided, Mr. Fincham, as I understand, any details about that. They've just raised it. So we don't disagree from an industry perspective that a study should be done in that area.
Well, let me ask you this. We get, we approve one and then there's an issue. How do you resolve it?
So, Mr. Chairman, I would say that, Mr. Sealy, so what happens is that if, if there is a study and AP Hill doesn't feel that it interferes, then under that circumstance, at that point, the applicant would have met the zoning requirements. And you'd approve their case. But if you prohibit it in that area, whether you know that there's radio frequency interference or not, it seems arbitrary with respect to a developer who has land acquisition, has everything, meets every other requirement of the ordinance. So all we're saying is, don't prohibit it in that area. Let us at least do a study and have the conversation and determine from staff and the board. And again, you're in control with a special exception permit. So you can determine whether or not it can be approved or not based upon that.
And, Mr. Sealy, if it helps, that is what AP Hill requested, if anything, or within a one-mile, within that buffer, if they could do a study and, or, you know, have a study done and be part of the results and the process. And that can be part of the special exception.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I'm glad you're still there. Just a curiosity, and I kind of like to think outside the box. Have you ever seen a solar project on top of an old landfill?
I would say, sir, that I have not seen it on top of a landfill. There is a special piece of legislation that we worked on a year ago that was effective July 1 of 2020 that deals with brownfields. And so we have, the challenge with these solar projects is that they have to be competitive in the least cost energy source, right?
Right.
So brownfields have a different economic structure.
Right.
With the cleanup of the brownfields on the brownfield program than, than would a greenfield development, for example. So we put the brownfields, which includes, you know, much broader than brownfields. It includes poorer landfills. It includes all the coal mines in southwest Virginia. It includes a lot of different, what I would characterize as physically distressed property.
So you're saying there's a possibility?
I'm saying it's a possibility. Yes, sir.
Okay. It's not something that would be prohibited because of what might be under the landfill, but I'm, it's just a curiosity, just to see if it's possible. And you said you think it's possible.
I think it's possible. You have to make sure that the methane gas that comes from landfill would not interfere with the wiring and not promote fire. And so it would be a fire safety analysis and there would be experts that would study that. I don't want you to leave thinking that that's what we would go to look and put it on top of a landfill.
No, you started, yeah. I mean, you started by saying, no, it's never been done. So that kind of talk. All right, Mr. Fincham, can I ask you a question? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
In the notes from the planning commission, Mr. Probst, who was here, said that he expected a project to generate $210,000 a year over its lifetime. That's something that, that we have some more data for. He said the county would receive revenue from machinery and tools tax amount of $210,000 per year over a lifetime. Is that something we think is realistic? It's gotta be the second time you've heard it. He said it before. It's the planning committee.
Yes, sir. If you recall, we had a discussion previously about the revenue generation opportunities for solar projects. And we talked about the citing agreements. We talked about the taxing authority that the General Assembly has provided. I'm not comfortable talking specific numbers because I think the numbers are gonna vary depending on the size of the project.
Maybe I should ask him? And before you go? No, I mean, he said it at the planning commission. So how does he prove? Mr. Probst, I lost him. Yeah.
Chairman, Mr. Thomas, so the General Assembly passed legislation called the revenue share.
Right.
And the revenue share replaces the MNT tax.
Right.
And the revenue share is $1,400 a megawatt. So Mr. Probst is talking about 150 megawatts times $1,400 is $210,000 a year. That's where that number comes from. And what happened in this year's General Assembly is we added a 10% escalator on that every five years. So that amounts to a significant amount of money, another three, three and a half, four million dollars over the life of a 35 or 40-year project. So you will hear that depending upon the size of the project, if it's 150 megawatts, you're looking at basically something in the neighborhood of 250 in round numbers over 40 years, which is $10 million. You're looking at the substantial increase in real property taxes. You know, the $4 million or so, $10,000, $12,000 an acre, plus it increases as assessments. And there's a lot of money to be made, plus there's a voluntary payment component that runs through the citing agreement, that all of which can be capitalized by the board and used for capital projects upfront.
And that's, that was the thing. I was originally, when we originally started talking about this, my, my concept was that a part of the wattage generated would be available to the county in lieu of any payment. So the county would always have some revenue.
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't go down in value like machinery and tools. That's different with what the General Assembly has proposed. So we have to go to General Assembly. I'm just reading what he said. And, and I just was asking if that was true. That's all I'm saying.
It is true. It is true based upon 150 megawatts times $1,400 is $210,000.
But not that we're gonna get a machinery and tools tax, because that's been changed.
So the machinery and tools tax, you have an option. So what we tried to do, and again, representing the solar industry, I structured this legislation so the General Assembly could not get to the county's money.
I kind of thought you were the lobbyist.
Yes, sir. And so in writing that legislation, it gives you the option to do machinery and tools tax, whether you have a local ordinance or not. It's a state level. It's basically at the real property rate. And there's an 80% step down the first five years and 70% and then 60% for the balance of the project. But we all know the deficiencies in machinery and tools tax because you have to have different schedules depending upon when the equipment is installed and it depreciates rapidly now over a 35-year period is established by the State Corporation Commission. So if you want a reliable stream of revenue with an escalator so that there's no time value of discount of money, then the revenue share is a, is a very good program. And we've talked with your county attorneys about that. The last thing I would say is the citing agreement is a binding contract for the period of the life of the project. So as a result of which, you are guaranteed the money that is set out in the citing agreement for the term of the citing agreement. And it's a contract between the developer and the applicant and the county board. So, Mr. Chairman, I would say that that, that is determined by the interconnection with PJM. And so whatever the interconnect amount is, that's the amount upon which the statute provides you authority to tax at that level.
Right. And, and, and we have to compare that value versus what machinery tax would be since it's an either or.
Yes, sir.
We have to do that for projects so we can get the most significant impact for the county. That's all I'm saying.
Understood. And I would observe that from a legislative standpoint and negotiations with the counties, then what we ended up with was the revenue share is not quite 2X the machinery and tools tax. And the machinery and tools tax depreciates. And of course, you know, it could be reset if somebody in year 20 goes back and installs new equipment. But at the same time, when you look at it economically, just about in every case for larger projects above 20 megawatts, you'll find that the revenue share is a compelling economic value proposition versus MNT. Good discussion. We look forward to having that discussion through the citing agreement process on these projects and, and to working with the county. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. For, any, any comments?
I just wish to proceed.
Well, I'm, no, because I'm still back to the map. What have we got for boundaries? Because you've said two different things.
Yeah, I said there's two different ways to handle it.
Correct.
Okay. So let me throw out a, an idea for you.
Okay.
Okay. Under 23.8 additional submission requirement. I'm sorry. Under 23.8 additional submission requirements, I would suggest a condition number seven. And that's on the overlay, that's in the overlay district, Mr. Sealy.
You're saying 23.8, Mr. Fincham?
Yeah, so it'd be page, that would be page eight.
All right. Bottom of page, or middle of page eight?
Yeah, yes, sir. Add a condition and that says something to the effect as follows. A radio frequency interference study, a radio frequency interference study or other appropriate study shall be provided to evaluate the potential interference to operations of Fort AP Hill for any project situated within one mile of the base. So as part of the submission requirements, if there's an application within a mile of the base, they'll submit an, a a study for Fort AP Hill to evaluate. And for, we can evaluate it as part of the special exception permit application.
You said within a mile.
Yes, if they want.
So if it's three quarters of a mile, it's?
They would submit.
They would submit.
I'm just, I'm just making, because within a mile, I'm just making sure we're talking about the same?
Yes, within a mile of the boundary of the facility. Yes.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just making sure we're talking about the same thing. That's all.
I understand. Yes, sir.
So you're saying on 23.8, you want to add seven to include the language for the study? That's one, correct?
Yes. Now, if you recall, back in the other projects, the 20 megawatts or less, okay, you've got your separate set of standards. If you include that, that standard here, that automatically carries over to
20 megawatts or greater?
Yeah, or, or less.
Oh, or, okay.
Yes, because this is the ordinance that's greater than 20 megawatts. So if you add that here, that automatically then translates over to the projects that are 20 megawatts or less. Because there's that cross-reference built into the regulations.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that.
So, Mr. Fincham, you said you had two ideas. That's one, right?
Yeah, the other was, was to amend the, the map to include the buffer.
Okay, no, I think. Yeah, I, I think if we do the, I think if we add 28 and add a number seven to what's a study.
and added number seven to what's the study, I think, no.
You can ask, it should be done by the.
Mr. Fincham, I just have one quick question, on that study, in that situation, would it be done by AP Hill or would it be done by the applicant?
By the applicant. It's a submission requirement.
Then the Hill always has a chance to comment on, on the thing next to. Mr. Fincham, I take it we had one public hearing, but you want four motions?
Yes, sir.
You have to have four?
Um, I think our attorney is going to, to say, yes, we have to have four.
I didn't know if he was listening. All right.
Please.
Move, move the adoption of text amendment eighteen twenty twenty.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, thanks, Ben, there's the motion and, and second that we approve text amendment eight, eighteen dash twenty twenty, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, ayes have it. Move the adoption of text amendment nineteen. Second?
Second.
There's, there's a move and a proper second that we approve text amendment nineteen dash twenty twenty, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Oh, sorry. Move the adoption of text amendment twenty twenty.
Mr. Thomas? Could you make that with the amendment to condition seven? To change.
Twenty-eight point. Twenty-three point, twenty-three point eight, right?
Correct.
Add number seven as the study.
No, we're not there yet.
Okay.
Amend condition number seven, change paragraphs one through fourteen to one through fifty.
That was the first change.
Right, which, which ties back in, into a change that.
Or we did earlier.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Fifteen, move the adoption with the modifications to paragraph one fourteen and now one fifteen, text amendment twenty. Seven to next.
Yes, we'll get that on the next.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, so there's a move that we approve text amendment twenty twenty with the addition of one through fifteen versus one through fourteen, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Move the adoption of text amendment twenty-one twenty with the addition of condition number seven under section twenty-three point eight.
And the amendment as presented in.
Yeah, the amendment as presented.
There's a motion to approve text amendment twenty-one dash twenty twenty with the amendments as approved by, as presented by the staff, second. There's the motion and proper second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Text amendment is adopted.
And Mr. Chairman, for, for those in the solar industry who are lining up at my front door, I will not be back till next week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fincham.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham, that was a good job, and thanks to the planning commission and staff.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the, uh, public hearing, Virginia Department of Taxation, fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-seven, six-year secondary road plan. I'm sorry, transportation, is that what I said? Tax, do don't tax.
Taxation plan. That's a point.
Mr. Fincham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we discussed the six-year secondary roads plan at your last meeting, the board has authorized the public hearing for, for that plan tonight. You were provided a one-sheet summary of all the funds available for, for road projects in the county and the allocation of those funds. Mr. Rice from VDOT is here tonight to hear any comments that the board may have related to, to the public hearing.
Okay. All right, the public hearing is now open for Virginia Department of Transportation, FY twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven school, six-year secondary road plan. Anyone would like to speak, please come forward regarding this matter. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone here who would like to speak regarding this matter? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Jim and I moved that we adopt the six-year secondary road plan, which includes all of two roads in the county.
Second.
There's a motion and a proper second that we adopt the six-year secondary road plan, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, tell them you had to stand there and present every number and every line to us, and it took, it took two hours.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm sure Kyle is watching.
Don't not forget the rural roads.
Next on the agenda is public hearing for RZ zero-one dash twenty seventeen, Westland slash Belmont LLC owner applicant. Mr. Fincham?
Mr. Chairman, members of board, your next public hearing tonight is RZ zero-one dash twenty seventeen, Belmont North, Woodlawn Belmont LLC owner and applicant requesting proffer amendment, which is also a rezoning on tax map eighty-three dash A dash one, which is in the Mattapani Voting District. The property is a project we know as Belmont North, it's a five hundred and twenty-six unit project that the Board of Supervisors previously approved in two thousand and eight with RZ eleven dash two thousand and seven. At time of approval in two thousand and seven, the board approved this project with a number of proffers, including proffer to dedicate land and provide some proffer, cash proffer assistance towards improvements in the county. The applicant proffered up to two point five million dollars for the, and the construction of a fire station on this site. There are another, a number of other proffers that were made at that time, transportation improvements, proffers to, to several entities related to recreation programs and commuter bus service for, for commuter rail, as well as a twenty-acre school, potential school site down in that area. The applicant is before you tonight requesting amendment to a number of the proffers related to RZ oh seven, RZ eleven dash two thousand and seven, and the staff report identifies the changes that the applicant is, is making or is requesting from the Board of Supervisors. Briefly, I'll go over those changes. The applicant has requested to be relieved of the proffer for the two acres of land and the construction of the fire station. The applicant has proffered to increase his cash proffer to help cover the cost of public improvements, including the fire station in the Carmel Church area. The applicant has requested that the GDP and the road requirements be modified to reduce the road from a four-lane divided boulevard to a, a two-lane road. The applicant has requested that the phasing plan, which has expired, be amended and updated to allow the project to go forward over the, the next four years. The proff, applicant also removed, was requesting the removal of several proffers related to intersection improvements at Drybridge Road, I mean, intersection improvements at Moncur Drive, and the proffer reductions or eliminations related to recreation programs and the commuter bus service. The applicant also originally proffered to basically prepay up to seventy-five connections to the utility system. The applicant is requesting that that be modified to allow three payments of thirty units each, so the number of units would be increased to ninety with the prepayment. The, the, the dollar value would, current in the previous proffers is actually higher than what the availability fees are now. I would note for the board, we're not losing any money with this proffer, these, these were upfront prepayments, and if there is a difference between what is proffered in, in this proffer and the actual availability fee, then the builder would pay that difference. That is a brief summary of the request of the applicant. I'll be more than happy to address any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. So the applicant is here?
Yes.
Before your open public hearing, if there's any change to the proffer. Know about that. Well, there is a change. I'm saying if there's any other change, if any other changes would require. Mr. Fincham, just for clarification, Mr. Thomas just asking, are there any other changes that other than the ones that we had before us in the board package?
There, there are no additional changes other than what is, is identified in the packet. And I would suggest that you may want to consult with the county attorney regarding discussions of any changes.
All right.
That's why I asked, because I know what Mr. Emerson is gonna say, any significant changes to the proffers we discussed now would require another public.
Okay, so let me go ahead and open up. All right, so the public hearing for RZ zero-one dash twenty seventeen is now open. If there's anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter, please come forward. If there's anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter, please come forward. Please state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Arthur Woolley, I reside in the Bowling Green District. I'd like to speak in reference to this agenda item number five, with the request for the amendment to the existing zoning proffers, eliminating the land dedication and construction proffers for public uses, including the elimination of a fire station with the current staffing levels in Caroline. It'd be wise to expand the growth of the county while expanding the Public Safety Department, both Sheriff's Office and Fire Department at the same time. To talk briefly on the Fire Department, the equipment needed, and I'm sure the fire chief could touch base on this, but for a fire engine and an ambulance for that Belmont station would be roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A ladder truck would also be needed in this county, we don't have one currently, that, you're looking at about a million dollars, so two million dollars just for the equipment to house in that station, that's not counting any personnel. My understanding is that that was supposed to be, I guess, presented in phase one, which it wasn't, and now the citizens of this county are potentially being liable for the funding of that fire station if it's not placed in with this development. Just to bring up a couple other additional points that I have here, with more residents being built in the county, that increases both demand on the fire and rescue system and the sheriff's office system. Currently with the staffing levels right now, I, I think the sheriff and both the fire chief are doing the best that they can. One way to improve that would be dedicating staffing to the fire engines in the county twenty-four seven so that they don't have to unstaff and hop on medical calls. So that would require more additional staffing on the fire and rescue side for ambulances, and then we could leave the employees that are on the fire engines to provide that fire suppression service to the citizens. In regards to the sheriff's office, I've personally been here when he's asked for more pay, I think it's needed. To give you an example, I was on the scene of a call and it was pretty concerning to myself, I requested a sheriff's office unit, and I was told by dispatch that one was not available. So I think with any growth that's gonna move forward in the county, it's pertinent that we as a whole work collectively together to, to boost up our Public Safety Department, both fire and rescue, and also the sheriff's office, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Mr. Chairman, normally you let the applicant speak and give a presentation related to, to the the applicant side.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Jeff Staples. I live in Goochlin, I grew up approximately one mile from this project that we're proposing, and in the near future, I will be moving back to Caroline. So I'm very pleased to have graduated from Caroline High School many years ago, as you all know. I have Mr. Sadi Gill here as our attorney, he'll be speaking, and Mr. Brian Bo, who is with Ryan Holmes, will also be speaking. We purchased this land in two thousand and thirteen from the original applicant, who was represented by, I think most of y'all know, Mr. Frank Sealy. Unfortunately, he was gonna be here tonight, but he's, he's in the hospital, so. He has worked very diligently with us because he really enjoyed his time here in Caroline County and helped to develop Belmont at, at Carmel Church. My brother and I are the major holders of Woodlawn Belmont LLC, so we are local. In two thousand and seventeen, in an effort to try to make the property more marketable, we decided to propose some proper amendments, and we went before the planning commission and decided to put that on hold. In two thousand and twenty, Ryan Holmes approached us with interest in building homes in their second site, I'm sure most of y'all know that they're in Pendleton, and they feel like that they have met the needs of the housing market that is, that is changing in Caroline, and wanted to have a different location. We have requested some proffer reductions because when the applicant in two, the original applicant in two thousand and seven came before the board, lot prices were a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a lot, we're only gonna be able to meet the market, be able to get about sixty percent of that. Therefore, from an economic standpoint, we have requested, we are requesting proffer reductions. We feel also that even with our proffer reductions, we will be making a substantial amount of funds that will be generated by, from this project to the county. And I believe each of y'all received a positive physical impact study that we did briefly over the life of this project, which would generally in the, if we can say generally in terms of the project lasting five years, would generate approximately twelve million dollars to the county. And that's from the current water and sewer tap fees, the increase in the cash proffers from approximately fifteen hundred dollars per housing unit to forty-eight hundred per housing unit. The road change that we're asking is, it's my understanding with dealing with Mr. Fincham, that it was originally thought that the Drybridge Road. that it was originally thought that the Drive Ridge Road was going to be a thoroughfare from the railroad tracks to the Lady Smith area. And that I've been led to believe has changed. Therefore, we are asking for that road to be just turned into two lane, just to accommodate the traffic within the development. The some of the other proper reductions, like with Fred, is not longer servicing here. As Mr. Fincham mentioned, the water and sewer fees that we're asking for a change in really doesn't change anything because it's a prepayment. So we believe that our project would be very beneficial to be moving on now for Caroline and also to meet the needs of people moving into the county to be able to have affordable housing. Approximately a week ago, we had a virtual meeting with the homeowners association of the original Belmont, which is called Belmont at Carmel Church. And there were people who had misconceptions about where we were going to start the development, where we weren't going to start the development. And I told them, one of the things, it was in the original proffer, we were going to start in A, not they thought in B. So they had concerns. I think one of their very legitimate concerns were, was Ryan Holmes going to develop a project that was going to be comparable to what their houses were so that they didn't get their homes to be devalued? This meeting took place with them after the cutoff for to send documents to you. And that is why, after the HOA meeting, I emailed each of y'all a copy of the questions and and basically the topics which we covered, which included an updated letter from Ryan Holmes with pictures of what they're proposing, which is very similar what they are doing in Pendleton. So I don't know if you prefer or not. I, the other gentleman will speak, or you have questions? First.
Yes, sir. Okay, yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Sadi Gill, and I am an attorney at a Richmond firm of Dorret, Akuma, Gerson, and Gill. I have lived in the Richmond area almost forty years. I consider myself a devotee of the Frog Level Fire Department. Once when I was riding my bike through Caroline County, was stung by, I don't know how many hornets. And I was able to get there and I got a shot of epinephrine, which kept me going. So I I still consider myself to be a a resident and a someone with a great affinity for Frog Level. What I'd like to talk to you guys about is, Mr. Staples gave you the specifics of the project. There are two memos that I have seen that I I know you guys have seen as well because they're addressed to you. One of them is a May third, two thousand eighteen memo from Mr. Cully. And that is, I think appended to that was an April fifth memo from Mr. Fincham to Mr. Cully. And these memos describe in fairly stark detail the growth or lack of growth that Caroline County has experienced. And while I was in the audience tonight, I looked again at population statistics in Caroline, as well as realizing that Mr. Sealy was an electrical engineer because I didn't know where all these questions about waves were coming from. So I figured that out, too. But I realized that Caroline has has not, since two thousand eighteen, Caroline has experienced negative population growth. And it has, you know, it it is, I think, it's the largest geographic county within this area. It's bigger than Hanrico, it's bigger than Chesterfield. I mean, it's it's a large land mass, and yet it has one of the smaller populations, and it's not growing. And so I I think simply from a, from the standpoint of a housing project that makes sense, that's sensible for the county, that looks good for the county, that is going to bring services to the county. You know, there's a recreational facility that this is bringing to both residents of the new development, but also the residents of of the existing development. So I I think, I mean, given, I think Mr. Staples hit on the topic well. I mean, you all have approved this before. It was based on some different proffers, which were, was also based upon different financial conditions. I mean, I think they, the developer, and what we have done is tried to wring everything we can out of this and into this. And I know there was some discussion about public fire safety. And I think Mr. Fincham has addressed that in the past. Now hopefully he will address that again, that the county has some plans in order to to take care of those things so they're really no longer necessary. So I would, I would urge, at least necessary in terms of a proffer. So I would urge the approval of these proffer modifications and allow the project to begin. I appreciate your time and attention, listening. And if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer.
I will ask some, but not at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Bow.
It's Bo.
Mr. Bo.
Mr. Chairman and board members, my name is Brian Bo. For the record, I'm with Ryan Holmes. We've done significant, well, a little bit about Ryan Holmes, if you're not aware. We're a Fortune five hundred company. We we build in fourteen or fifteen states and about fifty different markets across the country. We're the fourth largest home builder in the country. That being said, we're very excited about coming to Caroline County and expanding our our footprint here and and doing business in this county. We believe that that, you know, our activity here will will generate growth and and opportunities for for the people of Caroline County. And we're looking forward to that opportunity. I sent a letter that I sent to Jeff at the end of last week. I'm not sure if you saw it or not. I'm sure generally people want to know what the price range of housing will be and and those sort of matters. In our research, we 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 plan to start around three hundred thousand. And and I believe the price range we've got targeted is between three and four hundred thousand for the single family detached houses. And the single family attached houses would be roughly two seventy-five to three twenty-five, more or less. We're excited about this opportunity. We respectfully request that you consider, you know, the amendments that are being requested. And and we hope to be doing business here very soon, additional business here very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Bo. Um, I do have one letter that needs to be read during public comment, so I'll you you guys can have a seat if you want. I'm going to read this letter first. Then if I have questions, I will bring you back.
To the board. I am writing to oppose the request of Woodlawn Belmont LLC to modify the existing proffers and their current commitments to the county and the county residents. As I understand their request, the modifications were eliminate transportation improvements that they committed to do in order to get their existing land use site plan approved and eliminate provisions presumably presumably a land offset for a fire station that, at least per the previous agreement plan, was deemed necessary. The addition of upward of five hundred residents, two point eight dwellings per acre times a hundred and eighty-four acres, will necessarily add stress to the transportation infrastructure. One must also imagine that wastewater treatment demands will increase enormously. Finally, having the capacity to treat these structures and the environs from fire and the and provide rescue slash EMT services for a whole new community will not be an inconsequential expense and would have life or death consequences. While I understand that a development such as this has a positive impact on county tax revenues, the fact remains the developers agreed to the current plan and the associated cost as a commitment to the county, taxpayers, and the community. Asking the existing residents to bear the risk and additional costs at this late stage, for whatever reason, simply just is not reasonable. It reeks of bait and switch. Thank you. Dr. Bradley Norwick, Mattapani District.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Hello, board. My name is Duillan Betancourt. That's spelled D U I L L A U M E. I'm actually the president of Belmont at Carmel Church. And I just wanted to bring up some questions or concerns that some of my residents have in regards to this Belmont North project. We did meet with our, they did attend our HOA meeting last week, and they did answer a lot of our questions. So these questions I'm about to, or concerns I'm about to provide you guys are new. Now, there are some concerns in regards to the original amount that of the rooftops that were provided to us is around a little over three hundred. So we found out last week that now that number is over five hundred new rooftops. So we already have a speeding issue that goes on in the neighborhood, which the Sheriff's Office is aware of. And if you guys recall, back in two thousand nineteen, we had two incidents with actually children being struck by vehicles. So we, you know, we've been requesting for speed bumps to be put in the in the neighborhood. But, you know, for reasons you guys have not approved of that because our roads are are maintained by VDOT. But our concern is with this new project, they're actually on their first phase. They're going to be connecting to Triple Crown, which will connect directly into our neighborhood. So for the first phase of the, whatever amount of homes they're going to be putting in, that traffic is going to have to be going through our neighborhood to get to their new homes. So with that, once they move into phase two, once they actually connect their main entrance to Moniqueure Drive, we have a fear that the general public is going to utilize our neighborhood as a cut through. So that's just adding more concerns in regards to the traffic and speeding concerns that we currently have no control over. So we're not sure if the Belmont North project is going to be private roads or if it is going to be state maintained because our roads, ninety percent of the community is state maintained. So we have no say in what to do. And then I know I have thirty seconds. There were some concerns in regards to the Ryan Holmes plans that were emailed to the board. I'm sure, hopefully you guys were able to look at some of those. But some of the concerns is that the average single family home is around twenty-eight hundred to three thousand square feet. And then our townhomes are a little under two thousand square feet. That's the average. Some are a little bigger, some are a little smaller. The plans that were provided, they look small. And some of the single family, or I should say, single level homes actually look exactly identical to the Pendleton homes that they're building over in Pendleton. So I'm not sure what variation they're going, Ryan Holmes is going to use to kind of make it different, to make it Belmont specific. But they did advise us that it is going to be a craftsman style home. And a lot of our homes in Belmont at Carmel Church are actually colonial. So there were some concerns in regards to smaller homes being added to the community, which will lower our property values. And then, I'm sorry, I'm out of time. And then as a resident, so this is just myself speaking, not on behalf of Belmont at Carmel Church. But as a resident, I'm definitely against removing the fire station proffer just because I feel with an additional five hundred plus homes and potentially an apartment complex that's going, a project that's going to be connected to Belmont West, I feel that we will need those fundings to help out that that community. Because in a sense, that will be four communities, we're all separate HOAs, four communities that will definitely need that assistance. And thank you.
Thank you for the spontaneous. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. We've done some research into this proposed reduction of proffers. I'm sure you have it all before you, and I'm not going to say anything that you don't already know. But we we do have some concerns about eliminating the entrance to the subdivision, the four lane, over five hundred homes. Even in the packet, it says that VDOT would not recommend that. So that's a real concern for us. And like the president of HOA said, traffic is a concern. We have had speeding complaints in the neighborhood. All the construction vehicles could be going through their neighborhood to get to that neighborhood. So eliminating that entrance would be an issue as far as we're concerned. And also, the fire station is crucial. You know, we've been planning on it, baking on it for years. And Chief Loftus needs it. He needs that fire station. That side of the county needs it. Mr. Thomas has been trying to get one there for years for the people in that community. And and obviously, I'm sure we would partner and use the fire station with them, just the number of residents we have in that area. So there may be something that else you can look at, but those two issues are major concerns for us. We certainly want the development to come along, and we want this gentleman to be successful. But those are some really safety concerns that we have with those projects. And we don't want to pass that burden off to the taxpayer.
Thank you, Major.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Saying none, the public hearing is closed. How does the board wish to proceed? Questions for? Mr. Foren, you have any questions regarding Belmont?
My understanding, this this property for the fire station is entirely different than the one.
Say that again?
Um, I had three fire stations proffered, and we already have one that's being built. So this was the original one that was proffered. But it it took so long to get done, we've gone the option two. So it's a different fire station that they're talking about.
Mr. Black.
I, my concern, I just have one concern is that the the VDOT study, when we talked, they talked in the packet about VDOT had some concerns. I think those seriously need to be addressed before we move forward with that. And then the second thing is, there was a gentleman, the the second gentleman spoke spoke about growth. Our building official is, I I just want honesty, like on both sides, I just just be honest with me. And the, our building official is back there. We have like three, we set a record for homes being built in the county this year. So the the growth is there, whether this is approved or not. I mean, I think the growth is everywhere right now. So that's that's kind of a non-factor for us. I mean, we're we're having, we're we're setting records on how many homes we're having in Ladies Village and Pendleton all over. So I'm not sure where those numbers came from. I'd love to see them because the building official is back there to to discuss the numbers that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy?
Mr. Chairman, I'm one of two board members that's still here when we actually approved this. And I remember Mr. Thomas working on the proffers right up to the public hearing, which is why in Mr. Fincham's copy, you see handwritten notes as to the proffer changes that were made the very evening we had the public hearing. And those proffers were what made the project. Not the number of houses, not that it was an addition to Belmont, but that passed purely on the proffers that were presented that now most of them, in the, what I consider critical ones, have been deleted. I I look at the folks that have been paying taxes for for a very long time. And and the fire station that we could have built ten years ago, the equipment we could have purchased on a scale ten years ago has passed. Everything's gotten more expensive, and yet I see less mu, less money in the proffers going to the fire station, whether we have one or not, and and whether it's deemed that we don't need that one. I think that's a decision we and and the citizens. Whether we have one or not, and, and whether it's deemed that we don't need that one, I think that's a decision we and, and the citizens need to make. But it's still a true cost to everybody that lives here that we still have to pick up. And to see less being spent, and less being proffered for that, and the addition of more houses. The, the entrances to houses on Moniqueure Drive, the reduction in the, in the size of the entrance. All of those things have impact for me. I, I don't understand, you all purchased the property. Knowing what the proffers were. I mean, I'm sure that your attorney, who's here tonight, read all of this before the property was purchased. And if you talk to Frank Sealy, he'll tell you how hard fought he was to get all of those, those proffers in. So that that would be approved. And I, in good conscience, can't say that I'm going to reduce the proffers to let it go forward, because I was here. For the fight for those proffers. And I know what took place in, in this room that evening to move it forward. And I, I don't see any citizen in this county being treated fairly if we go backwards. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Sealy. Mrs. Long?
Well, I wasn't here at that time. Uh, however, I do know. I wish. Uh, I do know that this is a lot of information, and I have a lot of history to catch back up on. I would not be ready to, to make any decision on this now without meeting with VDOT. Without going out to see the property, without talking to the chief, without looking at finances and comparisons. And I just don't have all that right now. So I would, would, at this point, not want to be pulled with any decision on this.
Yeah, let, since this is Mister Thomas' district, um, I do have concerns with the uh, proffer changes. Certainly in today's uh, economy and looking at building. Um, I couldn't agree that anymore that, right now, uh, building is at a premium right now. The proffers that were offered. Back in, when this project first started, um, was proffered for a reason. That was to ensure that all the services. The additional services were going to be put forth um, in that area, and that the roads would. Provide service for those people traveling. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned if, if you think that. The rationale is that. We're building less houses in Caroline County. I've got a bridge I'd like to sell you. Um, because that's not the case. So your rationale does not fit well with me. Nor, we are large geographically, and we are the smaller county in terms of population. But that has absolutely nothing to do with the proffers that are presented here. So, um, you're going to have an uphill battle with me. And I'll leave it at that. Mister Thomas?
Thank you, sir. Um. There's a couple of things. Well, we're all talking, or, or they are all talking about the proffers and how, how, how good they are. I don't want to pat myself on the back, but I am, because I worked long and hard to get those proffered. Um, the pro- project passed three to two, even though they were great proffers, Mister Sealy still wouldn't vote for it. So there was a little more I left on the table. But, but the reality is, this was the best project ever for the county. At that time. There was, there was land for a fire station, land for a new school, plenty of money for, for utilities. And I, I worked with Mister Sealy quite a bit. And the day he was going to the bank to get the loan to start the project, basically the market crashed. So we would have had it if he'd have been there a couple of days sooner, but. Here we are now. So there's a couple of things. They've, they've all mentioned the things, but I want to go over a couple of things with you, Mister Staples. On the, on the call with Belmont's HOA, you talked about the importance of the project moving forward and the swimming pool and. The um, I guess clubhouse?
Yes, sir.
In the proffers, as you've modified them, the, the swimming pool doesn't have to come until the three hundredth unit. Were you aware of that?
That's correct. We were, because of a marketing uh, theory that we have, it's better to bring it on as early as possible. Correct, the proffer states that.
Are you aware that the project at Pendleton? They were forced to build the golf course first, before they got all their buildings, because certain people negotiated that proffer?
No.
So certain people are still here that like to have whatever amenities that are being promised happen upfront?
Although the proffer says, like you said, three hundred units, we want to put it in as soon as possible.
Okay. Did you notice how I specifically asked Mister U- Underwood before he started if there were any new things to add? Because any new things to add means we have to go back to public hearing if we're making a big change. So I was, I was hoping you'd jump up and say, I, you know, I'd do that right away, but you didn't.
But I didn't realize.
That's, that's fine, that's fine. Is there, is there anything about the construction entrance that you want to tell us? Is, is what, what uh, DJ said true? You're going to start through Triple Crown and, and drive through Belmont?
Unless the board changes the proffer. Because it states in the proffers that we will start right off Triple Crown.
But, but you had the opportunity as modifying the proffers to say, we'll start off of Moniqueure, so we're going to come in a different way.
Prior to them, uh, the HOA making a comment, we didn't, we hadn't heard any comments from anybody about that being changed. And so therefore, we never addressed it.
Okay, okay. But now there's something new you know about.
Thing, there is another proffer in there that says construction traffic will not go through Belmont and Carmel Church.
But in order to get to Triple Crown, you have to go through Belmont and Carmel Church?
Uh, not for construction. We will build a construction entrance to meet up with Triple Crown. But we won't be running any traffic, any construction traffic through Belmont and Carmel Church.
Okay. What, what about the, the traffic study that VDOT, that VDOT is asking for? Have you thought about that, or is that?
They only, it's my knowledge, we're asking for an update on that, which we have not addressed it, because. That will be something they'll require at plan approval. And they have the final approval on. Any of the uh, reductions or adjustments that we want to make. We have not changed any of the center lines of any of the roads in the development or proposed any changes.
Our packet says that VDOT has expressed opposition to the requested zoning amendment. Without a revised traffic impact analysis. Are you aware of that?
Yes, sir, I am. And then.
Is it possible you could get a revised traffic impact analysis?
But yes, sir, we can do that. Again, they will require that at plan approval. Uh, and if it comes back to that. Uh, Drybridge Road has to remain four lanes, then we'll do it.
Well, that's, that's kind of something we, we get often before the project is approved, is a transportation analysis. So we can, like the folks said, with of public safety, we can, you know, plan for it and at least be able to. Be somewhat proactive. Is it possible you could do that beforehand?
Well, we, I mean, I have no idea what their workload is at the moment. We'll use the same company that did it. Uh, we were going on the assumption that since the original one that was done back in two thousand and seven. There really hasn't been that much change in the, in the traffic in that area.
Well, actually there has, because um, Mrs. Long and I have been participating in the VDOT study. For two oh seven and moving traffic from Port Royal, or really King George to ninety-five. So there is a lot more traffic on two oh seven.
On, on two oh seven, but as, as it relates to uh, traffic uh, going out onto Moniqueure Road. And then going out on the Cool Water Loop.
Okay. I understand. I, I'm, I, I asked Mister Fincham, and I understand you did try, because it appears that the cash proffers are higher.
Yes, sir.
Per dwelling unit, than, than what they were before. But I, I had asked Mister Fincham to give us an overall analysis of what that was. Um, unfortunately, I asked him on Thursday, and he was tied up in a court case yesterday and today. So he hasn't gotten me that data yet, so I still need that data. So I don't think, I don't think anybody's ready to say yes or no today. Or so I'm going to ask, uh, well. Maybe people are ready to say one thing or another today, but I'm going to ask for, for. You, if you could get us an impact study from VDOT. And Mister Fincham could give us the, the, the financial study he was going to do. And I'll let you make any other proffer changes you would like to make. Like saying the construction is going to come from Moniqueure.
Chairman, Mister Chairman, we can't do that. Mister Emerson, you want to weigh in?
He can make whatever proffer changes, Mister Sealy.
Yeah, I, I.
Trust me. You can make whatever proffer changes, but we have to do.
For Mister Emerson, wait a minute. Mister Emerson, can you weigh in?
Yeah, Ben, Ben's not here, but I am. And uh, I mean, a couple of points. I, I, you know, I think, I think we're all this age here, but obviously, all vol- all proffers have to be voluntary from the applicant. Our requests, we can't request any from them. Um, so I mean, that's, that's, that is what it is. Whatever, we have the proffers before you tonight or the proffers that are before you tonight. If you want, if they're, if they're changed in any significant way, you're going to go back to public hearing.
That's.
So whatever mission you make, you know.
Thank, thank you, Chris. That's, that's exactly what I was going to say before I got cut off. You can make whatever proffer changes you want. We would have to go back to public hearing, if you do that.
Yeah.
That's all.
Right, and the other thing.
Be patient. That, that's the reality of the process. And, and I understood that, because I've, I've done this before. You have that opportunity, you have that chance to get us the, the traffic study from VDOT.
They updated on the traffic study.
That's it.
The other thing is, I, I think the applicant, I'm not sure if the applicant got a chance to respond to public comment. Um, I don't know if he wants to, but. Um, typically, there is some time allotted for them to respond to public comment in any capacity that they want.
Billy, I'm, I'm going to ask you to defer it until we get the traffic study and whatever from Mister Finch. That's all. He can make whatever changes, but it's got to go to public hearing. You knew that, Jeff.
Well, only other comment, I mean, I think I've already addressed them, their concerns about the uh, traffic going through. Belmont and Carmel Church. Uh, a- as I mentioned, the, one of the proffers says that we will start right there. Coming off of Triple Crown and going into the development. We didn't question that. Uh, they had asked me at the meeting, were they coming in from the other part of the division called uh, Traverse Court? And I simply stated that during the meeting that it was proffered by the county that we start there. Uh, and that we would be bringing all of the construction traffic. Heavy, light, everything would be restricted coming in off of Moniqueure Road.
But, but are you sure the county proffered that? Normally, county doesn't do proffer.
Uh, but it's, it's proffered, it, number one, it says we'll start in section A, which is on Triple Crown. Number two, construction equipment is restricted to coming in only from Moniqueure Road. And which we planned on building a construction entrance.
No, you can't. We've already closed the public. But that's what I'm trying. I didn't ask him for any problem. I said, you can make whatever changes you want. We come back to public hearing.
You have any more comment, Mister Thomas?
I'm going to defer. I'm, we'll defer until, that's what I said.
Mister Staples, you have any more comment?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you.
Any more questions by other members of the board? How does the board wish to proceed?
Chairman, I'm, I'm going to ask again if the board will defer this particular application until uh, we have the information requested. The specifically a traffic impact analysis, uh, the updated financial data from Mister Fincham. And any changes that the applicant would like to make. And as, as our county attorney would tell us, if the applicant makes any significant changes, we would have to have another public.
And, and you're okay with the rest of the proffer changes in?
I didn't say all that. I didn't say all that.
I, I would make, if you're going to make a motion to defer, I, I wouldn't make it contingent. I, I would defer it to your next meeting. And if something's submitted in the interim, you can add it to your consideration, but I wouldn't make the, the timing contingent on any submission.
Okay.
I would just defer it to, to your next.
Change your motion.
We're, we're not going to have anything. I'll defer it to our, our August meeting. We only meet once in June.
There's a motion, alright, there's a motion to defer RZ zero one twenty seventeen. Woodlawn uh, Belmont LLC till August, uh, our August meeting.
Right.
Is there a second, and a second by uh, Mrs. Long? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
Mister Foren, how do you vote? Excuse me, can I? Foren votes aye. Mister Black?
Nay.
Mister Sealy?
Nay.
Miss Long?
Aye.
Mister Thomas? And I vote nay. That's a three to three vote.
So that, that motion has failed.
Excuse me?
That, that motion?
That motion has failed.
Alright, so the motion has failed. Motion fails.
We'll move it to June.
You can, you can make another. So, I don't want to move.
That's not going to give them enough time to give them an hour. I don't know why you would vote again.
Move on to the next topic.
My, my issue is the, the other parts of the, I mean, not that I need to justify anything, but the. I have concerns with the other proffer that, that are being changed. So. Just, just those. That, that one issue, I don't believe it is enough for me to um. To, to make my decision, to make any other decision, but, but nay, so I can't, I can't support that. I, I can't say Mister Thomas something. I'm just, I'm just seeing what's before me. We shall move. Next, no action.
No action.
That's up to. Well, if, I mean, if you come back, you do, do what you think you need to do. Chris?
Sir?
I'm going to, I'm going to use you as the um. Unconnected parliamentarian, if that's okay.
Fair enough.
A motion to be reconsidered can only be made by someone from the prevailing side. If there is no prevailing side, how do you reconsider a motion that's tied?
It's funny that you bring that up, Mister Thomas, because I'm looking at your bylaws, uh, with a motion to reconsider. Um, when a vote upon any motion has been announced, it may be reconsidered on the motion of any member who voted with the prevailing side. Provided that such motion shall be made no later than the next scheduled meeting of the board. This motion for reconsideration shall be decided by a majority of votes. There's no, because you, you haven't passed any, any vote. Um, so you, you, the motion reconsider is not applicable, because nothing reconsider. Nothing's, nothing's been done.
Right, there's no.
Correct. So you can make an, you can make a new, new motion of any kind. Um, it, it, but you have to get majority to pass any motion on this.
I make a motion that we defer this for ninety days.
Second.
There's a motion by Mister Thomas, second by Mrs. Long, that we defer this, uh, RZ zero one twenty seventeen. Woodlawn Belmont LLC for ninety days. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Alright, Division, Mister Forehand. Mister Black.
Nay.
Mister Seale.
Nay.
I vote aye, Miss Long.
Aye.
Mister Thomas, vote aye. Mister Thomas votes aye, it's a four to two, we would defer this for ninety days.
Now, and to clarify, will you be, will this be taken up at? I, I mean, I think on that motion, will this be taken up at the next meeting following that ninety day mark? Or will a special meeting be called on the ninetieth day from today?
I would, I would suggest, Board, that we take it up at the next meeting following the ninety day. Is that, that's a meaningful. Is that good, Chris?
Be.
Earn it for ninety days.
Yes.
So we deferred it for ninety days and we'll take it up at the first meeting past the ninety day mark, that, that sufficient?
Uh, yes, i- i- you know, if you would humor me, I would, uh, Mister Thomas, could you, you. Rephrase your, your motion to that extent and have it voted on again?
My motion was to defer this particular action for ninety days. Which was a different, which was a different motion than made before. So we cannot act on it until August twenty fifth. Which would be the first meeting after that is, I guess, September meeting unless there's a second meeting in August. Right? Correct, correct.
So there's a, there is a amendment to Mister Thomas's motion that. We will meet regarding this matter, we will discuss this matter at the first meeting after the ninety day extension.
Correct, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, sir.
Please vote on that.
Alright, next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mister Staples.
Thank you.
That was just clarified.
No, yeah, not on the question. Yeah, we are voting.
I was waiting for it.
Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school budget. I'm sorry. I did, I circled it. Unfinished business, item number seven, uh, update on the, uh, special exception oh three dash twenty nineteen legacy part. Mister Fincham, are you doing that or Mister Sheeble?
Mister Chairman, members of the board, uh, you have the update from staff, uh, in your packet related to, um. Uh, SPX zero three dash, uh, twenty nineteen, um, staff has confirmed that, uh. Um, Drain Field Solutions is on site, uh, and is beginning the process of the replacement of the drain field. Um, Mister Whitman, uh, uh, went out to the site and we have talked to Drain Field Solutions. Um, they are proceeding, uh, with the installation and, um. Anticipate that they will have the project completed by the end of July, uh, weather permitting. Uh, once they complete the project, uh, the Health Department has to issue a completion statement. Uh, and an operations permit has to be issued, uh, since. There is still that final work and approval that needs to be done, um. Staff would suggest that we continue this to your September fourteenth meeting. Um, to, to ensure that that action is completed, uh, and we have the OP from the Health Department.
Thank you, Mister Fincham. I'd, I'd make a motion that we, uh.
I tried to say no.
You can't say no.
I, I say no now.
I'd make a motion that we will resume the September, uh, first meeting in September.
Second.
They need to be able to continue to pump and haul, so I think that's, if I'm not mistaken, Mister Fincham, that's why this is on the agenda. Cuz without approval, they don't have pump and haul.
Yes, that's correct. Well, we have, they, they got the pump and haul permit with, you know, uh, updated. But they are continuing on the pump and haul until this project is completed and the OP issued by the Health Department. So yes, um. Board has to continue, uh, the approval of the pump and haul.
So, so do we need that motion as well?
I, I think you could include that in your motion.
Alright, so I would make a motion that we continue this until September. In the meantime, we allow the, um, Legacy Park to continue on pump and haul until they get the OP for the drain.
I wouldn't say until they can, it can't be until, I was gonna say not until they get it, cuz they may never get it.
Yeah, well.
I mean, we, we, we're sitting here now fifteen years later.
Don't look at me, I'm both know, you made me work the bar, so, sometimes you need to work. Correct. Alright, and I'd make a motion that we, uh, continue this until our September meeting and revisit.
Thank you.
Since you are so. There's been a motion and a proper second that we continue this until Sep- until September. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Oh, stop, stop threatening, Jeff.
We have had dry weather, the best dry weather in the last two, two years.
Yeah.
I'm surprised it's not in by now, personally.
Exactly.
Well, this comes too far then.
They can have a ribbon cutting for that?
It's about this, we got.
Is there gonna be ribbon cutting for it? Yeah.
You, you know. Alright, next on the agenda, uh, agenda. Is item number eight, the adoption of a resolution appropriating funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school budget.
Mister Chairman, members of the board, we prepared a memo, Finance prepared a memo, um, on the. School, uh, twenty one, twenty two budget. Um, as you will see, uh, the County Fund, General Fund Transfer to School Operations Fund is sixteen million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. Which includes five hundred and thirty six thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars to purchase, uh, five replacement buses. And two hundred and thirty two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars to pay previously leased, uh, uh, amounts for buses. As well as fifteen million, three hundred and forty six thousand, nine hundred and sixty two dollars for operations. You'll also note that, and I've been, obviously have seen that the, their special funds increased dramatically, uh. Eleven million, four hundred and thirty four thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars, which reflects infusion of the American Rescue Plan funds. And other money such as CARES and, and, uh, E S S E R to earmark for the schools. This brings the total for all school revenue and expenditures to sixty two million, seventy eight thousand and forty nine dollars. The grants are multi-year and not required to be expended in full until September of twenty twenty four. The appropriation resolution reflects the full multi-year projection, CP, CCPS has requested the budget each year not to have to come back. For the budget amendments during the year, um, so those, uh, uh, federal monies and state, and additional state monies over what we had, uh, anticipated. Uh, which is similar to the money we've received, um, from the American Rescue Plan. We didn't get final numbers until just recently on what we were gonna receive. I, I have reminded, uh, the school superintendent, Dr. Calverick, that, uh, on, uh, be very difficult for the county to, uh, replace or, or. Offset those funds, so those things would need to be expended for one-time purchases and not for ongoing operational costs. That would, the county would be looked to, to make up in the future.
Alright, Mister Colley, thank you.
If we get in the under about eleven, eleven million supposed to spend.
They have, um, guidelines, sort of like we have certain things that we can do with the funds, they do as well. I don't know that.
It, it's been.
Tamika knows what those are, but they have to.
They have, it's multi-year and, and they don't have to spend it all until twenty four, twenty five.
But they've gotta spend it and it'll be, you know, the guidelines, they'll have to submit what they've spent it for.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we don't, we don't know what the guidelines are, I mean.
I don't.
I mean, they're, 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 if you, they're very broad, I mean, they can spend them on, on a number of. A number of things, but, uh, Mister Colley's saying, whatever they spend it on, hopefully most of it's one time. Because you're gonna have to, uh, plant that money, uh, after the grant money is, uh, is gone, so.
And, and she did concur with me that they understood that there's no way that they could. You know, hire or do things like that with it that would then be an ongoing expense, that there would be no revenue for once this one-time money is gone.
Yeah, I think there is some, some, some leniency in the, uh, language with the secondary act.
Really whatever, that's cuz C I P projects are okay, right?
Yes, some, some.
If they, they've gotta justify them back some sort of way to something, but that, that, the, the schools have that responsibility to.
Right.
Make sure that the projects that they spend the money on fit, just like the county does with the ones we do, so I. And it, it doesn't come to this board for that.
Mister Colley, I do have, I do have a concern, looking at administrative spending as two hundred thousand plus over the budget.
Over appropriations.
Appropriations, I, I'm concerned about that.
What?
And I'm not ready to approve until that's rectified. I don't know how any of the board members feel, if they've taken a chance to look at it, I'd like to ask some clarification. If we're, we're appropriated by category and it's.
Correct.
Spend within the category.
Marshes here.
The category is overspent.
Someone here from schools probably doesn't. Yeah, Marshes here.
They can send a memo, I'm not. If, if they would like to, I mean, I know that, um, the Vice President of the. School Board is here, she'd like to take back the, the information that the administrative expenditures is two hundred thousand above. I don't, I'm not sure why. The appropriation is two hundred above it.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
How does this, I guess my concern is, how does this affect? Um, I understand your question, and I'm not saying we shouldn't ask it, but how does this affect for, um, them for next year? As far as being able to get the contracts out, because we're coming to the end of the year and, 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 um. They, they need to be able to hire new teachers and, um, do whatever they need to do for the next year. And I don't wanna, well, I understand the question and I think it's a valid one, um, I don't want to, um. You know, interfere with them being able to do what they need to do for the fall.
No, I, and they, I think. We are at contract time right now, I know, this is May and normally they do, they do go out in May.
Right.
Are you gonna leave the money appropriated as it is and everything? Yeah, or something.
This, this sheet that Finance prepared for you is adopted budget and actual expense. During the year, there are additional appropriations made to various budgets, so their budget was, uh, uh, extend in twenty eighteen. Went up to one million, six hundred and. Thirty five thousand and thirty some dollars, so they did over expend that year by seventy thousand, but they were over spent that eighteen year in total. This is budget to expense. This, this sheet prepared was actual, the budget number, so what we adopted in April.
Understand.
There was an additional appropriation to administration during that year.
I understand.
But they still over spent eighteen. Yes, by seventy thousand, but they overspent eighteen in general, thank you.
And FY eighteen, good evening, and FY eighteen was the year in which we had fund balance on the bound, on the books. So we actually ended to the good of thirty five thousand in whole, but there was the, um, overspending at that time. If you recall, that was the year in which I came in, um, was doing a lot of cleanup in March of that year, trying to close out the year. And we had categorical transfers of, also at that time. So we ended the year with a good thirty five thousand to the good, with some transfers between special fund cleanup and categorical cleanup. But for that actual physical year, um, there was a, uh, negative spend.
So what you're saying is that you ended up with additional funds, although you spent out of the category, you still had. You still had more money at the end of the year left over.
We did.
But. Um, what's from eighteen was two hundred and thirty four thousand? I don't know, um. What's that?
And.
Reversion. Reversion, go back to six.
No, went back to fourteen, because you had four hundred and thirty five thousand. When I, when I calculated two hun- two twenty nineteen, there was one million, nineteen thousand dollars left in reversion. That went all the way back to, to twenty fourteen, because you had the two, uh, the twenty fourteen adjustment was four hundred and thirty five thousand. That was the audit versus the actual that you gave, that's cor- right? So that's where we started off with the confusion.
In eighteen, we had thirty five thousand from operations plus two hundred and some thousand from the Anthem Funds that year. Um, and that was re-appropriated as part of the eighteen and nineteen that you all appropriated one point two million to us for.
Right, that was, that was up to twenty nineteen in, the one point two million was the reversion. I got it in my head and you, you guys tried to tell me it was wrong, but I knew it was right. We originally had, the one point two million was from twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen. That was the one point, one million, two hundred and eighteen thousand that was given, when you said you had three million dollars left at the end of twenty. And I backed it away, said I didn't wanna talk about that, is that correct?
Correct.
So that's where that was, so. Just wanna make sure we're dealing with the same numbers.
Seeing in these numbers, this discrepancy from eighteen is a lot to do with the difference in administration and the finance folks. At the schools prior to their arrival, we haven't had any of these issues as far as.
Mister Colley, I understand what you're saying, but within the, this board, we appropriate funds by category.
That is correct.
And everyone is to spend within the category, there is an issue, then we wanna resolve that issue.
Correct. And, but we haven't, since, since eighteen, we have not had that issue, and that was. What we went through to fix all of that at that time.
And then we took money out of instruction in nineteen, in twenty nineteen.
No, in twenty.
In twenty. And, and, and we put it in administration, and we put it in, um, maintenance, I believe. Did we, did we take? Did we take it out of the, we took it out of. Three hundred dollars, we took it out of two, two areas. And maintenance. I got it in my, the numbers in my, my head. Yeah, I don't, I don't have it, I mean, we have no control over your, um. Your, um, secondary relief money or the governor's gears money, we have, I mean, that's eleven point four and, and that's, that's. That's yours to deal with it as you choose within. You know, the parameters, so. I don't have any issue there.
And we provided at our last joint meeting, we provided you the soup memos as to what we could spend that money for.
Correct.
Just the last one, um, that came in after that meeting, we did not have the memo.
Well, I'm sure you couldn't do it because you just got it and we just got ours too, so we, we had no idea, we're making adjustments as well, so. You, you did provide, and doesn't mean, you provided that to us, doesn't mean you have to, that's your. So, I mean, again, that's within your, I'm not gonna sit there and tell you that you have to do anything with money that you. Wanna do and if you decide to move it because it's relief money, that's fine with me, I don't have an issue there, so. Don't get me wrong there.
No, I was just letting you know with the memos to, as there was questions what we could spend it on.
Oh, I know, oh, yeah, I've already read it, so I, yeah, so I'm, I'm okay with. You know? Okay. Alright, so we need to, we need to make a decision here to, to, to adopt the, uh, uh, appropriate the funds. For, uh, schools for. The upcoming school year. I'm good, I don't.
It was in twenty eighteen and it was a prior administration.
Uh, then we need a motion to adopt this, uh, the budget for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So we can appropriate the funds.
So.
So there's been a motion by Mr. Black that we, uh, appropriate the funds for twenty-one, twenty-two, is there a second?
I'll second.
That you, Mr. Forehand? Second by Mr. Forehand. All in favor say aye.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Discussion, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, discussion.
Somebody tell me what the seven ca- I don't see, I see six categories, one, two, three, four, five, six.
I have a page off that, hold on.
I see one, two, three, four, five, six. I don't see seven categories.
You're at one, two, three.
I can count to six or I can count to eight.
Those are right. Special funds, textbook. Cafeteria.
Oh, yeah.
Special funds in the revenue side and on the expense side.
Special fund is there twice.
Yeah, but that's, one's a revenue, one's an expense.
Two different categories, one's expense, one's.
Right. Yeah, the expenditure categories are over on this, start with a line, a third of the way down the second page. The revenue is the first side, so that's school operating fund revenues, local, state, federal, transfers, all that stuff, then special funds, which has no local money in it.
Right.
Textbook fund which has state and local funds in it. And transfer from the, uh, textbook fund and then cafeteria fund which is charge of services, no local funds, state and federal, uh, uh, funds. Then you come to the expenditure side and then you'll see special funds again. Textbook.
Right.
And then school cafeteria and the expenditures under that, but that, but both of those numbers bounce out to the sixty-two million, seventy-eight thousand, forty-nine.
Right.
It's everything they can, that they would control.
Special fund, special fund. But what, what are the, tell me the seven categories, cause I thought I knew them.
It's six, instruction, their operating fund is instruction, administration attendance and health is two, pupil transportation, operation and maintenance, facilities and technology.
So it's six, not seven.
Right. That's the operating fund. Forty-seven million, forty, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Yeah, yeah, you're on the school board, you tell me. You're on the school board, Jeff, tell us.
Somebody had seven locked in my head.
Textbooks is separate fund, that used to be buried in the operation fund, but I've had y'all break that out so we, cause that's a mandated fund and you.
Right.
You used to have people come into the public hearing saying they didn't have textbooks and stuff, so we funding that every year to what we were.
I'm just.
No, we didn't.
I'm making sure that we're all talking about the same.
We are, forty-seven million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen for the operating fund. Yeah, that used to be about a million usually and stuff.
Yeah, but that wasn't a category.
That was never category, it's just that it's, it's got, it's got line items in the revenue.
I want to. There's a motion and a, a proper second. Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Very good. Alright. The. Information will count with Mr. Colley.
Our next regular meeting is scheduled for June eighth at six P M in this room. Um, it is a state holiday going Juneteenth, officers are closed, that is a Friday. Um, we've already mentioned earlier, but we'll plug it again, the, uh, county, uh, agricultural fair, the twenty-third through the twenty-sixth of June. Um.
We do have, we do have on here about the July meeting.
That, that's the next discussion.
I'm sorry.
Currently, we have scheduled our meeting of July thirteenth, when we did the budget, I mean, the meeting calendar at the beginning of the year. So if you want to cancel that, you need to take a, a, a affirmative vote to do that.
We for a long time didn't do a July meeting, Mr. Black was on vacation.
We have missed them in the past.
Was gone and. Never in July?
We've missed them in the past, but I.
Okay. I, I'll make a motion that we eliminate the July meeting.
A second. There's a motion in proper second that we el- el- eliminate our July meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, July meeting is canceled.
That, that's all we have on the calendar.
Or we are, or we had our closed session, uh, closing board comments, Mr. Forehand.
Uh, non, sir.
Mr. Black.
Uh, just, Mr. Colley, Mr. Chairman, I will be, um, for the next meeting, I will be in Maine, so I do plan to, uh. I do plan to attend meeting virtually, so, um. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Sealy.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I have none.
Mr. Thomas. Uh, two, two quick ones, Mr. Sadler, I, I would like to have that meeting with the. Uh, possible broadband vendors as soon as possible. And. The other one is, Mr. Sheeble? What's the schedule for the fire station? Oh, thank you, Mr. Colley, alright, just wanna keep Mr. Sheeble awake.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in proper second and we adjourned, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.